Good evening, I'd like to call the Shoesbury Planning Board meeting to order. First item on the agenda, review and approve the minutes from March 6, 2025. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes from this meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
I wasn't here, so.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
No questions.
No.
Can I get a motion to approve these minutes?
I move that the March minutes be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, review and sign bills. We do not have any bills this evening, correct, Chris?
Correct.
Board member comments. Does any member of the board have any comments they'd like to make this evening?
No comments, ma'am.
No comments.
No comments, Mr. President.
No comments.
All right. Staff report. Chris, we'll try to not make you speak too much.
Thank you, I'll be brief. I am losing my voice a little bit this evening. I do want to let the board know, we did select a consultant for our townwide economic development plan. That's a plan that will be evaluating the Route 20, Route 9 corridors, as well as Route 140 in two sections. So that project, we've selected a consultant and awarded that, will be coordinating a kickoff meeting shortly with that consultant. But that'll be looking at economic development opportunities that the town can pursue, and includes a lot of analysis of existing conditions. It will factor into our master plan update as well, to provide an economic development component to that plan, and fulfill those requirements. So, more to come on that, but I just wanted to give that brief update to the board, to be aware of.
Who does the consultant is?
RKG Associates. So it's the same consultant that did our economic feasibility analysis, so.
Great, excellent. Anything else?
That's it, Chris.
Okay. Move into meetings and hearings. First up, parking, excuse me, parking verification, administrative site plan review for 610 Hartford-Turnpike.
Thank you. So this is the, an administrative review, so looking for planned comments from the board members related to this. This will ultimately be determined by the building inspector, as administrative site plan review. There's no exterior changes proposed, but there are changes in use to the existing property, most notably the change from 10 Hartford-Turnpike, which will become a religious use with 20 seats. The plan as shown does provide the six required parking spaces, as well as six Hartford-Turnpike, which is going from a catering business to a taco restaurant. That also provides the required five parking spaces. So there's enough parking under the requirements, but it does trigger the administrative site plan review, as requiring off-site parking, or off-street parking, sorry.
Quick question, Chris. So the, the, one that is changing from catering business to taco, did they originally already have those five parking spaces, or are they providing now, as part of this change?
Yeah, so the, the parking was revised, there was a number, there was a dentist shop that was looking at going in that location, and some other uses, so there was some restriping, restructuring of the parking, some minor facelift of the property, and that work was conducted. So as of this date, those parking spaces are existing.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board on this?
Yes, is there a, is there a requirement for handicap parking for the new taco restaurant?
There is, and one will be provided. The site does operate somewhat as a shared use, so that's why it's 6 and 10, and we're looking at that holistically. So the lots are merged, all of their separate uses, but the one parking, handicap parking space is being moved, sorry, moved from the side of that structure up to the front of the parking field. But the one handicap required is provided.
Okay, but, so not yet shown on the, on the plan?
Um, sorry, there's a couple other versions, the one that was uploaded. Yeah, so it's, it's in front of the, the 20, so that lot line that exists, so that's in front of the religious use is the one.
Okay.
Handicap parking space.
And that meets the requirement?
It does.
Okay. So the, and the taco restaurant is based on six seats? Is that right, based on the floor plan?
Correct, and employees, yep.
So that, I'm sorry, that one handicap parking space is to service both properties?
Correct.
Do I just have one additional question?
Sure.
So the, 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 the parking spaces for the house of worship is based on, one parking space for each three seats therein? Is that right?
Um, so it's one for every four spe- uh, seats.
One for every four. Okay, I was looking at it, uh, on, you know, section C, places of public assembly, one parking space for each three seats therein?
Oh, sorry, the, sorry, the assembly is one for three, the restaurant is one for four.
So it really should be six and a half, but the handicap counts as one, all right? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Do we need, we don't need to take any, is there?
No, if there's any additional comments, I'll forward them to the building inspector for your consideration, but.
I think so. Okay. Next is the proposed fuel cube pad. It's a de minimis change request, 378 Main Street. Sir?
Good evening, how are you?
Could you state your name?
Eric Ring, Director of Buildings and Grounds at St. John's High School.
Thank you very much for coming. So do you want to just tell us a little bit about what is being proposed, I suppose?
Yep, we're looking at installing a precast concrete pad and a self-contained fuel cube to dispense fuel for our fleet of vehicles at the school. It's a double-walled, self-contained tank with bollards in front of it for vehicle protection.
And is that located in the back of the facility?
Behind the maintenance facility.
Okay, it's behind the maintenance facility? Is, aside from the bollards, is there any other security or monitoring that happens back there?
Any what?
Any, any other security measures or monitoring of, of that?
We have security cameras, 360, on front of the building.
Okay.
And the unit will be secured after hours.
Okay.
It'll be limited on who has access to it.
Other members have any questions or comments on this item?
Quick question. Is there any other local or state permitting agency that you need to get an okay from for something like this?
We went through the fire department, we have a permit through them, they inspected the site, inspected our plan that I've submitted, pulled out an electrical permit, because we will have to run new electricity to it. Building permit was not required, it was just the de minimis change request that we needed.
Okay, great, thank you.
And do you have it posted, like, any, I'm not overly familiar with fuel cells and whatnot, but are there any other precautions that need to be put in place, or that are going to be put in place for, in the event of a spill or anything?
It gets inspected annually by the fire department, and we are required to keep a fire extinguisher at the location.
My last question was, is it, is it near any existing drainage?
Excuse me?
Is it near any existing drainage on the site?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay. You have any questions?
I do not.
Anyone else?
I do not. I'm all set.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we do have to vote for, to approve it as a de minimis.
Okay. All right, so I guess at this point, I'd like to see if anyone would like to make a motion to vote on this de minimis change?
Sure, I make a motion to approve the de minimis change request for St. John's Preparatory School of Worcester, for the proposed fuel cube pad.
I think we first have to make a determination that it is in fact de minimis, and we vote. So I guess I would say, having looked at this and been familiar with the existing site plans, I would submit that the change through the addition of the fuel cell is in fact de minimis, not requiring a public hearing.
Okay.
A second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, Tim, can you just restate that?
Sure.
Motion?
I make a motion to approve the de minimis change request for St. John's Preparatory School of Worcester, for the proposed fuel cube pad.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is proposed two-family conversion site plan approval, 49 Walcott Road. Chris, can you confirm that this has been asked to be continued to the next meeting?
We did, so we did receive a request to continue to the May meeting, that will conjoin with, so that will conjoin with the two special permits that have been applied for as well, for the floor area ratio, and the two-family use in the Residence B2 district.
Okay. All right, so can I get a motion to continue this public hearing for 9 Walcott Road to the next meeting, which is?
May 1st.
May 1st.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Next, AU Drive Preliminary Subdivision, 239 and 247 Boylston Street.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you, to the chair, members of the board respectfully, my name is Richard Ricker, for the record, I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue. I'm here with Norman Hill, who is with land planning, who will explain the rather ambitious plan that, you know, you're, we're asking you to look at. This is a, this is a plan for Nick Audi, who has rebuilt one house on this site, and has built another house on this, on this, in this, this plan. There are presently two non-conforming lots on this, on this site, and one plus for this particular plan, I would suggest to you, is that it's going, this, this plan would make two non-conforming lots conforming. The other thing, the reason for this proposal is Nick has four daughters, he has now three houses for three daughters, and he wants to do a fourth. This is a large lot of land, as you can see to the rear of his, his houses, there is no frontage without the, the work that he is proposing here, and he would be looking to put one house on this large piece of land for the fourth daughter. There are a number of waivers, obviously, that would be required for this, and I think basically, it's a challenging lot, and there's topography issues, there's, it's a sizable lot, but there's topography issues, and there have been houses up there on that side of this hill without any frontage whatsoever for quite some time, so with that, I'll let Norman take it from there.
Thank you, good evening. Good evening. So Nick has four daughters, he has currently three houses, he'd like to build one more house for his fourth daughter.
And Nick is here, sorry.
Nick is here, with one of his girls right here. So behind Nick's house is a three-acre, three-acre lot with one house on it, up on the hill behind him. So he's struck a deal with that neighbor, where he could buy a portion of that three acres, add some of the land to one daughter's lot, make that lot conforming, and build a new house on what's left of that lot. At first, I'd like to make sure I understand where this is, we're not going to ask you to vote tonight, I'd like to take this under advisement, you know, think about it, I would strongly encourage you to go out there and drive the existing driveway to the one daughter's lot, because it's over 20% steep, it's a very dangerous driveway. We would bring it down to 4%, so it's a very dangerous situation, but the new road would be at 4% coming off the street. So, Chris, could you have your assistant put up this, this mass map or map? Is that possible? Put that up on the screen? I'm going to turn this, shall I turn this to the board?
They've got it right here.
Oh, you've got it right here?
You may turn it so the audience can see.
So this is mass map.
Well, they can see.
If you go out 140, Noah, who's putting it up? If you go out 140 from the center of town, it's about a half mile down the road on your left, that's where this is located. I brought copies of that, too, if you sound, try to put it up. So I've got the two lots in question, this locus. One is house number 239, and the other is house number 247. 247 has the three acres up and back. 247 currently does not have legal frontage, neither does 239. So the two lots that are shown in this preliminary plan, neither one of them have legal frontage. So here's 239, that's where one daughter lives now, that's a smallish, that not, doesn't have enough area or enough legal frontage. And then there's three acre parcel back here, which has two houses on it, but the driveway zigzags up over here, that doesn't have any kind of legal frontage either, but it has plenty of area. Can you all see that, okay? So the goal is to take some of the land from this three acres and add it to this lot, and bring a subdivision in here, something like a paper street, to create frontage for this lot, for this lot, and for that lot. You see how that works?
Can you do it on the monitor somehow, and point what you're talking about on the monitor, please?
Should I answer that now?
Sure, yeah.
I'm sorry, what's your question?
No, can you show on the monitor what you're pointing to?
Sure.
Because your back is towards us.
Sure.
Thank you.
So this is house 239, the driveway comes up here and goes back to that house. This is three acres up here, there's two houses, it's zigzag up the hill over here. All right, this lot doesn't, this lot doesn't have legal frontage, this lot doesn't have legal frontage or acres.
How did they build it? I'm sorry, I'm not the type of player.
So it's time for me to work here and there, but I'll try my best, all right?
If you sit at the counter, I have it pulled up, so I just want to make sure the microphones pick you up.
Could you put up the, move that?
And just to answer that gentleman's question, they were built before zoning.
Okay.
Built before what?
Zoning.
Zoning.
So this is a necessary, just to give you a feel as to where these houses are located, where the trees are, the three acre lot is mostly wooden. Want me to put that one up, Chris?
Sure.
So when I read, I highlighted the, the locus lot, and that driveway just snakes up the hill and goes to that house on that. But I just want to be giving appreciation for these houses across the street, this house is along Boylston Street, and this house is up behind, on another street, up behind, up the hill, up ahead.
Again, could you show us on the monitor, please?
That one wasn't sent to me, so I don't have, I don't have that one.
I can show them on that.
Again, we're not going to ask you to vote tonight, I just want to make sure you understand where it is and what it is. Right? So this next drawing that he has up now, it shows the area in question, it shows the proposed subdivision, which would create legal frontage for that lot, legal frontage for this lot, and legal frontage for the new lot. This would be the new lot here, it also takes area to add to that lot. So this lot, which is non-conforming, becomes conforming, because it has legal area and frontage, this lot would now have legal frontage, and the new lot would have legal frontage. So it looks great on a flat piece of paper, the issue is the slope. Existing driveway coming up here is over 20%. It's like, you can't stop on a snowy day, you go right out into 140. So Nick, Nick puts cozy, he doesn't want his daughter to drive that driveway on an icy day. But what's proposed is to take that down from 20% to 4%, so it would be, it would be much safer than what's there now. The waivers we're asking for, this is only a 40-foot wide strip, and your regulations require a 50-foot wide strip. There are no roundings here, those are existing flat, flat corners, like 90 degrees, you require 30-foot roundings. So we're asking a waiver on the width, a waiver on the roundings. There are some other waivers we requested, but they're not, they're not installed. We've asked to waive sidewalks, we've asked to waive granite curbing, we would do K-Cod curves, but my client is willing to put a sidewalk on one side if the client thinks that's what you want. So I want to encourage you to go out and drive this driveway.
It's going to be private, right?
And think about this, I'm sorry?
It's going to be private, right?
It's private property.
Yes.
No, no, you're not, you're not looking for the town to accept this.
That's correct.
Oh, would stay private for, yes, and, and restriction could be put on the P H state map, yeah.
It would stay private, yes.
And is this being, is this labeled as a, a private road, or is it technically a private driveway, which would be like a, a common driveway for these?
I would call it a private.
Three lots? Is that?
I think that's something we would work out with planning, but Chris can probably...
Yes, I mean, I think the proposal here is to provide the subdivision road, which would create the frontage, but what's actually constructed is the driveway for the, for the single home. So I think, you know, we could do a, a number of conditions, that, you know, the lot not be further subdivided, subdivided for additional housing units, things like that, to restrict any further development, knowing that this is unlikely to be fully constructed. That said, our regulations do require us to evaluate this as if one day it will be constructed. So that's kind of the, the framework that we're working under. Understand, this is to provide for one single lot, but would never, is unlikely to ever be brought up to full subdivision standard, or need to.
We're trying to apply a truck, I forgot to mention that, we've provided a turnaround halfway up here for a tri-truck, so if I try to pull in, if this house needs to be addressed, or this house, take care of the fire, and then back out, get to the turnaround, and we can back out. So we'll, we'll provide turnaround tee for, for a fire truck.
So you're not going to, you're just creating the bulb on paper for the purposes of frontage? Are you going to build a hammerhead? That's what's going to exist on the ground?
Yes, yep, yep. Do you want to add anything else?
No question.
Do you know?
We all set then, Richard?
Yep.
All right, we'll leave it for you, Detective.
Just got a question.
Have a question.
Yes.
The 20% grade, it's going to be reduced to 4%, so at some point, you're going to have this big drop somewhere?
We're going to transition to almost about 9.8%, we're going to four for the leveling area, then transition to 9.8, and then we get back to grade about, about here, we get back to grading. But this is, this is being a cut. The right side would be cut, which will keep that left side right, right at grading.
So the rooks get a big retaining wall along there?
I'm sorry?
The, the rooks get a big retaining wall along the, the north side of the roadway?
They'll show the retaining wall here, on the north side, yeah, yeah. Any other questions at this time?
Is one of the waivers you'll be requesting for the maximum grade to, to go up?
Yes, yes.
Because the max is 8%, right?
Yes. As you, as, as you, I'm sure are aware, that hillside is all rock, so they're hoping to get into, obviously, get that waiver. This is cutting into the rock pretty substantially already, but yes, that would be one of the waivers he's, he's requested.
How about utility delivery? Is there, I'm, I'm assuming that there's utilities already serving 239, but, but will, is this driveway road going to have utilities within it as well, to service this other lot? How are we getting utilities up there?
So we're proposing that the water go to the house through, through the other lots, so the town water wouldn't go up the hill. There is a hydrant at the bottom of the hill, but we wouldn't bring the town water up this new road. And the, the sewer, the sewer, we would bring up the new road, but not the town water.
How about drainage?
We would bring town water to the house, but it would go through the back of the existing lots.
And talk about drainage.
Drainage?
Yep.
So, so we're not going to be able to do anything about the drainage of this part of the driveway, road, but we will be able to put a drainage detention fine infiltration system up on the hill. So right now, when it rains hard, all the water just goes down. So when we're done, we can add up, increase the rate for the total amount that goes down that hill. So we'll, we'll hold it back up in here, which would compensate. So if you measure it here, pre-construction, you'll get a number, post-construction, you get the same number. All right? So we would, we would have that mitigation drainage in the competitive plan. If we don't show it on this perimeter, we wouldn't.
Any other members have questions on this?
Yes, we, so just, in terms of the request for the preliminary subdivision, is that in an effort to bypass the requirements if this was considered a rear lot?
I, I, I'm not that familiar with your rear lot regulations, is it more than three acres, a rear lot? It's, it's usually oversized, I don't know if this would satisfy a rear lot, and it wouldn't create a, it wouldn't create frontage for these non-conforming lots if we did a rear lot.
Correct, so the, the idea of the, of the, of the subdivision or the private road takes that away, in, in essence? And there were, there were a number of requests made in a January 30th letter regarding this application, were those, were those addressed, would those supports be coming?
I'm not familiar with the letter.
I'm not familiar with the letter.
Okay. There was some, some, some questions from, from planning regarding this, this application to be addressed, but I haven't seen those.
We will.
Addressed yet.
We'll address those then, yes.
Just to summarize the bulk of our comments, many of them are procedural, we did review it, you know, with the, understand this is a preliminary subdivision, so the, the bulk of our requirements do understand that, and, you know, the bulk of the waivers that are requested, so really is looking at evaluating for the, for the board, and deferring to the board, what needs um, what needs to be addressed at this preliminary phase for this project, um, and what can wait until the definitive phase, um, for, you know, more formal submission. So, um, just for the benefit of those not familiar with that process, if the preliminary plan is approved, the applicant is still required to come back, uh, for a definitive subdivision plan. The fees are reduced because we've already had some time to look at it, um, but, um, the applicant will still need to do the stormwater, um, peer review, traffic peer review, all of those, uh, unless waived by this board. Um, so again, that's, that's all detailed in that letter, but it's primarily looking at, um, um, trying to parse with the board what, um, items should be done at this preliminary phase, um, to have comfort that a definitive phase is, um, able to move forward.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right. I think at this time, I'd like to open it up to members of the public for any questions that they may have on this. Yes, sir, if you could come up to the podium and, um, give us your name?
So Peter Mancuso, thirty-three Wachusett Circle, um, and a butler to the property. Um, so I've lived up on Wachusett Circle for thirty years now. And, you know, one of the pleasant things about the neighborhood is this nice wooded lot in the back. Nice trees. We all have private backyard, uh, backyards. It's, uh, it adds value to the houses. Uh, it's really a desirable location there with the, with the privacy and, uh, and also adds quality of life to the, uh, to the residents there. So at the time I had, when they were developing my neighborhood, I had the pick of a lot of the lots on Wachusett Circle. I picked my lot because it was a nice private location. It had the nice trees in the back. And, uh, I remember I, I talked to the builder about the lot and I said, you know, gee, what do you think about this, uh, you know, this lot here? So he explained it was landlocked property, uh, just likely ledge on the, on the lot. It's a steep slope. He'd have to go through other properties to, to build on it and it, you know, in his feeling, it wasn't, you know, just a great location to build on. Uh, so fast forward thirty years and, well, uh, here we are. So as I look through this proposal and design, to me, it already looks like it's fairly congested area down there. I mean, there's already houses, uh, houses behind those houses, other houses behind them, a house up in the back. And now this is just going to jam another house in the middle of it. So I saw, uh, online, there was record of a meeting that was held back in February of twenty seventeen of the targeted zoning committee chaired by Mo DePaolo. And there, uh, the discussion of that meeting was about lots referred to as pork chop lots and, uh, irregular lot geometry. So, you know, it seems Shrewsbury's trying to move away from that type of, uh, building where there's, uh, houses sharing driveways and, uh, so this seems to be in conflict with that, with this meeting and with that, with that, uh, initiative. You know, there's a house a little further up on one forty that was built so close to a ledge, I swear you could reach out the window and touch the ledge. I, I think you can jump from the ledge onto the roof of the house. And my only point for bringing that up is you don't have to build a house everywhere you can possibly put a house. As a matter of fact, this lot, this is called out in the design, uh, general notes, item number four, that there's evidence of bedrock conditions, uh, further testing is recommended, a cost estimate to assess, you know, just how much will the cost to build and, or if it's even possible to build on that lot. And I would think until you do that testing, you really can't place where the house is going to go. Therefore, you don't, we don't know, uh, the abutters, what, where, where's this, where's, where will the house be located? I know you, you have it, a spot for it, but until you do this testing, it seems to me you can't, uh, definitively say where it's going to go. Therefore, you don't know where the trees are going to be that need to be cut down or how many trees, uh, in the, that disruption to the area. Now, to the point about the ledge, I can say from experience that anybody that's been around for, for thirty years, there's quite, uh, there was quite a bit of ledge up in my neighborhood. I mean, there, there was, uh, a lot of excavation, blasting, uh, rock crushers, jackhammers. Uh, and this area is right next to that, so I, I would really almost guarantee that you're going to have that same, uh, same condition. On top of that, the proposal is asking for waivers to at least seventeen of the planning board bylaws. And the answer to, uh, there's a, uh, waiver request form that asks the questions, reasons why this waiver is in the public interest, not inconsistent with the purpose of the subdivision control law. So the answer is given is subdivision is proposed to create a new lot for Nick's daughter, uh, and create frontage for a few other houses. So that doesn't really, to me, doesn't really say this is in the public interest. It might be in Nick's interest to build a house and, you know, I think that's a great thing to build a house for your daughter, but it's not, I don't see that being in the public interest. So this proposal impacts seven houses up on Wachusett Circle. House value, uh, the buffer, noise and sight buffer, uh, going down to one forty. There's four or five homes around that general area, houses across the street, houses up and down one forty. And it's a big disruption to the area, right? I mean, this, this construction isn't going to be an easy, uh, house build. You know, it's not a couple of guys in a, you know, they show up in a pickup truck and with some, uh, nail guns and, you know, build, build a house. This is heavy, heavy equipment, uh, possible blasting, jackhammers, rock crushers, extensive clearing of trees. We're not really sure where those are going to be, but there's going to be a lot of trees coming down. Hauling those trees out, uh, entering and exit onto one forty, uh, which is a very busy highway, right? There's trucks that zoom up and down one forty. So, you know, good luck trying to pull out to one forty with a big truck. So my point, uh, in the end is why, right? Why build this house? You know, if you look at this as an equation, uh, it seems like a pretty lopsided equation, right? On one side, we have the impacts, the seven houses up on Wachusett Circle, the house, four or five houses down in that general area, houses up and down one forty, the existing regular house layout already, already there, a list of at least seventeen bylaws that need to be waived, uh, clearing of, clearing of the trees that we all enjoy and give us, uh, quality of life, uh, the major excavation and disruption to the area during this construction, if it's even possible to build on it. And on the other side, you have one person that wants to build a house. So I don't see how the latter outweighs the former reasonably. You don't have to put a house everywhere you can possibly put a house. So, and to end, why move forward with this proposal? Until the testing is done, you really don't even know if it's possible to build on the lot, much less know where the house, uh, is going to be located, how many trees have to be removed, or where those trees are. And even with that, even with the testing issue aside, the fact that there's at least seventeen waivers that you need to build, it should be a non-starter, right? Why, why waive the rules of the planning board that you've already established for the good of the community? So therefore, I'm not in favor of this proposal. I urge the board to not move forward with the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mancuso. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Yes, sir? Please state your name.
Of course. Good evening. My name is Michael Frangello. I live at twenty-five Wachusett Circle. One of the abutters of the property. Nick, I take my hat off to you, worrying about your kids. Good for you. And if it was my daughter, I'd be worrying about it too. Saying that, that's the good news. The bad news is the population in the area is dead set against this. I have a, um, uh... Gone.
Happens to the best of us.
Petition. That was a hard word. I have a petition from, uh, in, in two days, um, I was able, and I'll give it to you shortly. I collected twenty, thirty, I'm sorry, thirty-six signatures of hell no. And not a single person that I spoke with was, oh, yeah, that would be okay. It's all hell no. We don't want this. This is not good for the neighborhood. It's not good for the residents. It's not good for the town. We base this on two, four, five areas of concern, and I think the, uh, regulations for zoning and for, uh, development are based on it as well. Compromise the safety for our townspeople and infrastructure, the, the whole way it's set up, not only the access to Route one forty, but also the houses up above on the ledge. Environmental impact, you know, clear cutting essentially to get a house and equipment in there. Unfortunately, there's less and less land available for wildlife. I mean, at the night, you can hear owls and, and, um, sea fox and, and whatnot. That'll be gone. That'll be diminished. It sets a dangerous precedent for others. So once he, once this gets, assuming this were to be approved, which to say another house isn't going to go in and connect to the cul-de-sac, et cetera, and other areas of the town as, as well. I gotta believe this is going to create legal challenges for the town. I gotta believe that. I know in our neighborhood, there are some attorneys that are chomping at the bit on this one. Not a threat. It's just a heads up. And, um, you know, Peter mentioned it, um, as well. There's no, other than the daughter, and again, God bless you, there is no benefit for the town whatsoever, or for the area, for the neighborhood. So as I mentioned, I've got thirty-six signatures, and if I had a little more time, for some reason I was messed up. I had the meeting next week, not this week. Had I had more time, trust me, I would have got a lot more signatures on this. So on behalf of the people that did sign the petition, they are vehemently opposed to this and ask that you just put an end to this once and for all, regardless of how much ledge is found, how the house is going to be maneuvered in there. The gentleman earlier said, you know, a few waivers, seventeen, I think, is the last count I had. That's more than a few. If it was one waiver that, you know, two feet away from the property line, too close, you know, I kind of get it. But not seventeen, in counting. And I'm sure there'll be more once additional work was done. So again, on behalf of the neighborhood, um, vehemently request that you put a squash on this once and for all and move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looks like the sill of the foundation is, what, six hundred and twenty-two feet? Assuming this is a two and a half story colonial standard houses, are the people in Wachusett Circle even going to see the house?
No, they'll be looking over the top of it, but there will be some trees left that, I suppose in the winter they could see, but see it through the trees. They could see this one more rooftop.
No, no.
Okay.
No.
No, no.
No.
Sir?
You're right here.
Okay, I just, that's, that's not the way the meeting works.
I, I apologize. May I comment on that one when you're done?
Look, you can after somebody else. Let's open it up to some other questions.
Is there other, yes, ma'am. If you can please approach the podium and just give us your name?
Sure. I am Shelver Lee. I'm at one thirty-five Boyleson Circle. And I'm actually right down below these gentlemen, and I can see their houses up through the woods and the ledge. So I can speak to that, is that they can see down to our houses, we can see up to their houses. And between our houses, it's just woods. So you definitely can see that. You know, as I said, the wildlife is there. It all comes through and we can hear the wildlife, which is nice. But again, we can see up, they can see down. So yes, they would be able to see that. So. And I can speak to the amount of ledge that's there in that area. We had expanded our driveway a few years ago and we had to have a lot of ledge removed. So, um, and our backyard is all ledge, so we can't even go up that far. So just take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the community wishing to speak on this? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Um, my name is Maryam Pastouch, and I live at twenty-five Wachusett Circle. I was fortunate to be able to spend time with people that are listed in the petition to talk about, um, the plan and the proposal. And, um, so I am here representing the many voices of the Shrewsbury public, um, we have spoken with regarding the proposal.
You're representing yourself.
Okay. Representing myself.
You're representing yourself. Okay. You're not an attorney, correct?
I am not an attorney.
Okay, then you're representing yourself.
Okay. I'm representing myself.
I appreciate the petition. I appreciate the effort, but, you know, if people want to comment, um, who are the abutters, they, they should come to the meeting themselves, uh, unless they want to hire an attorney or hire an engineer or whatever. But go ahead, proceed.
Okay. Um, so the applicant, um... So the applicant has requested at least seventeen waivers that's been brought up, and I would say, and counting, to be able to move forward to build this home for his daughter. The reason I say and counting is per the response of the Director of Planning and Economic Development, Mr. Chris McGoldrick, in his comment letter to the planning chair on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, on page two, Mr. McGoldrick comments on the, for the future definitive plan. And there he states, "The applicant shall show the septic system on the plans." So as of, um, today, when I looked at the most recent documents up there, there is still no document that shows the septic system on the plans. That was a request in that eight-page comment letter. So that is not in that plan, and therefore it can be fairly assumed that there may be additional waivers that may be associated with this omission that may not have been considered and/or documented. While I recognize the individual importance of this endeavor to the father, his daughter, and the land seller, the collective focus and what is best for the broader community must first be served. That is clearly stated in the purpose of the rules of regulations governing the subdivision of land in Shrewsbury. That's page one of the document. The subdivision control law has been enacted for the purpose of protecting the safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the cities and towns in which it is or may hereafter put in effect by regulating the layout of the construction. So on page six of Mr. McGoldrick's comment letter, he says, "The applicant shall expand on each of the waivers requested and provide a narrative for why the requested waiver for each of the seventeen waivers is in the public interest and not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law." We looked, many of us have looked over the past few weeks for this and have called to check if this document has ever been filed. The only document that exists out there on the site, and when we called yesterday and found out, is, um, document K, which basically says what Peter has mentioned, that there, the interest that is identified is for that of, um, the daughter of Mr. Audi as well as making those two plots, um, legal by having legal frontage. those two plots legal by having legal frontage. So, basically, since this has not been done, we, the residents, or I should say, myself, have made, has looked at what would be the core argument that would be in the public interest, right, as stated by the laws that we are governed by, that we have put into place. One, the safety of our townspeople by regulating proper construction standards and procedures, okay? We have a document, Section Four is design standards, Section Five is procedures. Of the design standards, there are fifteen high-level categories, and they are asking for waivers for five of the fifteen, or one-third of the categories, for street waivers, sidewalks and grass plots, easements, fire hydrants, and driveways and openings. These standards are meant to ensure the overall system, and as everyone has mentioned and talked about, that's a delicate ecosystem behind there. And so, this subdivision design is not optimal in the aggregate. Each waiver does not further shore up the overall system, but introduces risk to the overall design. Number two, convenience of maintaining accessible and reliable infrastructure for all. Again, I'm referring to this document, okay, that we all know that that's what we are supposed to be abiding by. "The powers of a planning board and a Board of Appeal under the subdivision shall be exercised with due regard for the provision of adequate access to all of the lots in the subdivision by ways that will be safe and convenient for travel, for lessening congestion in such ways and in the adjacent public ways, for reducing danger to life and limb and the operation of motor vehicles, securing safety in the case of fire, flood, panic, and other emergencies, and ensuring compliance with the applicable zoning ordinances or bylaws." The applicant is asking for a 25-foot utility easement, asking for, the applicant is asking to have exception to the 25-foot utility easement, is asking for a 15-foot easement for the new house. The applicant is proposing a nine percent grade, which requires a waiver to the standard, and a discussion with the fire department to determine if the access is adequate. Section 4A, 3.0C, says there's a minimum stopping site distance of 200 feet at 30 miles per hour, and 115 at 20 miles per hour, and may require a speed limit to be posted. So, it sounds like possibly changing the flow on Boylston Street or 140, the flow of traffic. So, again, each adding a little bit risk, each individual design standard that we're asking to be, an exception be made, is adding to the overall risk of the system or the development of, the development project. And finally, three, the welfare of our inhabitants, including ensuring the development aligns with public interests, not just private gain. When we, when I read the proposal, Form K, right, that we talked about, it just appears that the reason is for public, for private gain. And so, even when you want to look at more detail, and another waiver they're asking for, which it sounds like they're willing to put another sidewalk around the cul-de-sac per the requirement of having five-foot sidewalks, six-foot grass plots, provided on both sides of the all-new subdivision roads, at the end of the day, the reason for that waiver is because it's not about the community. It is about a private drive to allow this, to be, to build another house that would typically not be able to be built if we follow our own defined standards and procedures. So, as somebody else has pointed out, granting these waivers could set a dangerous precedent leading to other developments that fail to meet the well-thought-out design standards and procedures that are spelled out in Sections Four and Five of the Rules and Regulations. What assurance can we provide for future residents if a large number of regulations, both design standards and procedures, are waived for private convenience and gain? So, in summary, waiving seventeen-plus design standards and procedures as defined by the subdivision control allows for suboptimal development of this subdivision and directly impacts the houses and roads directly, abutting this proposed development. In conclusion, I believe the town of Shrewsbury, I asked the town of Shrewsbury, asked the board to consider the public interest and ensure the applicant expand on each of the waivers requested and provide a narrative, as specifically asked in this eight-page comment letter, why each waiver should be granted in the public interest, because it's not, and not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law. This onus falls on the applicant. We, the public, do not see the public interest being served in this proposal.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let me follow up on my, and I apologize for speaking out of turn. It was a reaction to lies. I apologize. So, yes, I think this one is my house. So, this is my house. I see more than roofs, rooftops of these houses. I can see what they're making for dinner, I can see their snowblower behind the house, I can see their cars, and kids getting loaded into cars. And I invite all of yous to come to my house, let me know in advance, I'll get the barbecue going, and see actually what we see out there. And I'm sure Peter can attest to it as well. And you're going to lose more trees, you have to get equipment in there when you build a house. You will see everything. So, it's more than, I apologize, it's more than just rooftops. And when you stop, and this is an easement the town has across our properties for drainage. So, you've got a lot of rainwater and whatnot coming down this hill, all the way down. I'm not sure, not an engineer, not sure what that retaining wall is going to hold back. As Peter mentioned, there's a lot of rock, a lot of ledge in there. There will be blasting, there will be drilling, even for testing, there will be. That's potential damage to our houses up top. And we're relatively close to the edge. They're going to be sliding down. So. Again, I apologize for speaking out of turn and reacting the way I did. And gentlemen, if you would like to come to my house, gentlemen at the table, and see what I see, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you, sir.
It's more than just rooftops.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I talk?
Yes. Please just approach the podium and give us your name.
My name's Liz.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, Elizabeth Cortese, 145 Boylston Circle. So, this map is wrong, it's missing my house. So, if you go down to the bottom, this second, 233 Boylston Street, is 145 Boylston Circle. And my main concern is water. We get a lot of water in the basement coming down that hill. So, if you build giant retaining walls, my concern is that you'll have more water, it'll kind of act like a dam, that will continue to come down to my house, in addition to all the little critters that will probably be harmed by the loss of habitat. There's a lot of deer, a lot of coyotes, all sorts of things back there. So, if they have less land to go to, probably more of my backyard they're going to hang out in. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this this evening? Other board members?
Just one other point. We still have a sewer moratorium, correct?
Correct.
So, they're going to have to build the Title V system.
Correct.
Okay. Because we're talking about running sewer up the subdivision road.
Right.
So, they're going to have to locate a suitable place for a septic system.
Yeah, the only way you could tie it to sewer would be if you had paid it better.
Betterment, yeah.
And this, it has no frontage, so they wouldn't have...
Yeah.
The lot, it has no frontage, so that it wouldn't have paid a betterment for sewer.
Okay.
So, the answer is yes. It would require a Title V.
Okay.
And we have a number of questions to answer, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, I think it's, the next would be that we would continue this public hearing until our next meeting on May 1st?
Thursday, May 1st.
Thursday, May 1st. Is there a motion to continue this public hearing?
I move that we continue the public hearing on the preliminary subdivision plan for Audi Drive until Thursday, May 1st at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes. Yep. Okay. Next up this evening, proposed gas station site plan approval for 193 Hartford Turnpike. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Donald O'Neil. I'm a lawyer in Worcester, here this evening on behalf of Yatko Energy, was the applicant in this case. Also present with me is Robert Michaud from MDM Transportation Consultants. And I believe remotely available is Philip Henry, who's the civil engineer from the Civil Engineer Design Group, to the extent that there are any questions for him related to the overall site design. I believe at the last meeting that we were here, the board felt that they wanted to get a look at the traffic engineer's peer review of the work which our engineer has done. And I understand that that has come back and is, raises a couple of questions that we thought that you might want to hear from Mr. Michaud. But overall, it's a favorable review, as we see it, of the proposed work that we're doing out there. And Mr. Michaud is, I think it would probably make sense to have him walk you through that and answer any questions you may have regarding the traffic. If there are any issues regarding just the engineering in general, then Mr. Henry should be available to answer those. And I would answer any questions that you want from me. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chair and board members. For the record, Robert Michaud, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants, based in Marlboro, Massachusetts. What I'd like to do is just share some of the highlights of work that we've accomplished since we've last met, and I want to make sure that this shows up properly on the screen. Give me a moment to make sure that the presentation is the one I want to present.
Are you looking to...
I'm having a little technical difficulty here, for some reason. I've got a PowerPoint presentation that should, should pop up on the share screen, and it is having a bit of difficulty doing that. Bear with me. Here we go. Thank you for your patience. So, what I'd like to recap are several points. First, to reiterate that we've made substantial changes to the site access based on consultation with DOT input from our neighbors, DeMolus in particular, and input as well from safety officials here in Shrewsbury. The first significant change resulted in the restriction of left-turn movements onto Route 20. That was presented to the board at last meeting. Since that time, we've also had the opportunity to work more closely with the fire department to identify changes to the Lake Street driveway to ensure that fire apparatus and circulation met with the approval of the fire department based on their equipment requirements. Third, we've taken a deeper dive in understanding the relative impact of this project on the Lake Street quarter in particular, a specific question raised by DeMolus as they are continuing to pursue access improvements along Lake Street that are relative to its own monitoring program for the Edgemere Plaza across the street. We'll recap some of the commitments to post occupancy monitoring for this project, which is what I would refer to as the belt and suspenders assurance that the site will operate as intended, based on what we've evaluated and represented to this board. And finally, that we have in fact concluded the MEPA process. The issuance of the MEPA certificate is due formally tomorrow, and we're pleased to report that we have received no negative commentary on what we've been discussing with DOT as it relates to access improvements. So, starting with the site plan, which is on the screen, I've highlighted the central driveway to the property, which, as presented the last hearing, now restricts left-turn movements out of the site. This is a right-in, right-out driveway. Its design features comply with MassDOT commercial driveway standards. It's specifically designed to accommodate the type of commercial vehicles that will need to use it, particularly for the exiting right-turn movement. The design is in fact highly consistent with the Edgemere Plaza Easterly driveway, which has nearly identical design features, width, orientation. And secondly, and this is the subject of the ongoing conversations with the fire department, we've taken a closer look and modified the Lake Street driveway. The concern in that particular instance was that fire response, to the extent a ladder truck needed to get into the site and then have a corresponding response north of the site on Lake Street, the design needed to accommodate the swept path of a larger tower vehicle without encroaching on the opposing travel lanes on Lake Street. So, the current design actually achieves that by widening the driveway and introducing a central scored concrete design element that allows for that tracking of the larger vehicle to be able to make that kind of a maneuver if it needs to access Lake Street North.
Bob, can I just stop you? Can you just confirm, can you go back to that slide for one quick second? So, that is just in the event that a, a tower can get out to go right onto Lake Street?
That is correct.
That's, so that's the analysis that was done there, not to go left onto Lake Street, correct?
Well, we've modeled the movement as left, but that was not a critical movement, in that there's ample maneuvering area for that to occur without opposing a vehicle that might be traveling in the opposite direction on Lake Street. The concern that was expressed to us was that upon exit, the right-turn movement did need to sweep into what is today the exclusive left-turn lane. That does not necessarily violate NFPA 1, or Massachusetts amendments to NFPA 1, but it was a preference of the fire department that they wanted to have uninhibited ability to make that movement without relying on someone coming to a stop for that movement. So, so that design feature has now been achieved. And the next slide will actually present the actual swept paths that are associated with that. So, this is a model of that tower vehicle. This actually models both a left-turn inbound and a right-turn outbound movement, and it shows that those movements can occur entirely within the confines of the driveway. You'll see that the exiting right-turn movement vehicle now is able to sweep without impacting that opposing lane whatsoever. Now, we also know, and discussed with the fire department, that the design of the central driveway does allow, if we go back to that, does allow that same vehicle to exit directly to Route 20 and then to turn right onto Lake Street. So, there are actually two means of emergency egress from the property for those larger vehicles, to the extent those options are needed. So, the modeling that we've done and presented to the town, it's now part of the record, fully meets all of the maneuvering requirements at every location within and to and from the site that we've discussed with the fire department. It in no way changes the functionality of the Lake Street driveway, it simply expands the central section of the driveway to allow those sweeps to occur. It simply expands the central section of the driveway to allow those sweeps to occur. Now, one of the design considerations that we've been asked to look at is what effect this project will have on the Lake Street quarter itself, particularly as it relates to planned improvements that Demolesz is pursuing. As the board is aware, the Edgemere Plaza has a much more substantial impact to Lake Street than was originally anticipated in their filing and their evaluations. Their permit, both locally and at the state level, obligate them to monitor the operations of the intersection following occupancy of their use. That study, that monitoring report clearly indicated that there was a long queue that develops on Lake Street during certain hours, particularly weekday evenings and Saturday mid-days, that needed to be rectified. And the plan for that, which is, as we understand, in the works and has been endorsed by MassDOT, is to convert the Lake Street southbound approach from what is today a through right turn lane and exclusive left turn lane to a through right and a through left lane. So it's a simple lane conversion and a reconfiguration of how the signal works in that it's going to be phased in a way that allows for what they call split phasing. It allows the movement of traffic from Lake Street unimpeded as a single phase. And then that, excuse me, phase stops, and then it allows the Edgemere Plaza driveway to then clear. So it's split phase, so there will be less conflict within the confines of the driveway, the Route 20 intersection, and therefore will reduce, to some degree, the queuing that currently occurs on Lake Street. So what are the relative impacts of this project to that planned improvement is the question. And we've taken a deep dive into this analysis. We've submitted this to the MEPA office. We've submitted this to DOT. We've submitted this to the town. This analysis is subject to peer review. And the findings of that analysis indicate that first and foremost, that relative to those planned improvements, there will be no change in operating levels as a result of this project. Secondly, that most of the trips that this project is generating are in fact pass by. They don't represent new trips to the area, so there'll be a modest traffic impact to begin with. Third, that there is a de minimis change in the amount of delay that would occur on Lake Street or at the traffic signal as a result of this project. On average, two seconds or less overall, once this project is built and operating. That the operations of the signal at Lake Street at or at level of service D are better and will continue at that level with this project in place. And finally, that the design of the site, the internal circulation elements of the site are specifically designed to physically prohibit the ability for large tractor-trailer trucks to even get to Lake Street. They'll have to use the Route 20 driveway to be able to exit the site. And they'll also need to use Route 20 to get into the site. And I'll demonstrate that in just a moment. So as a recap, and this was presented at last hearing, we've looked at weekday morning peak hours, weekday evening peak hours, Saturday midday peak hours with and without the project and under the current access scheme, which allows full access on Lake Street and restricted access on Route 20. And we know that the number of new vehicles that would be generated to or from the Lake Street quarter are modest. They're less than 20 per hour during any of the peak hours, whether it's the morning, the afternoon, or the Saturday midday. But we also acknowledge that because we're not allowing left turns to occur directly onto Route 20, that there's some additional vehicle activity that would be generated as a turn onto Lake Street. This analysis that we've presented accommodates that increase. We expect in the weekday morning peak hour, where my cursor is pointed, that there would be just over one vehicle a minute that would want to make that left turn. I will point out that under both today's condition and that condition that Demolesz is now advancing, that the southbound movements on Lake Street are not problematic, are not subject to long delays or queues, and as our analysis demonstrates and has been subject to peer review, will not materially increase the amount of delay or queuing relative to those conditions. During the weekday evening peak hour, those numbers are cut in half. We expect that the site on Lake Street would only generate about one vehicle every couple of minutes, or about 40 vehicles an hour, making a left turn. It is during those periods of time that there is longer queuing on Lake Street, but not to the extent that it's going to create a capacity impediment at the driveway, nor will it unduly influence the ability for a vehicle to make that left turn once every couple of minutes. So it's a modest volume. The analysis demonstrates that there will be very little delay associated with that movement and that the additional delays to the Lake Street approach during the weekday evening peak hour are very modest and do not result in a level of service change. And finally, on Saturday, very similar result, about 40 left turns an hour making that movement. As we look at the deeper dive in the level of service analysis, there are a lot of letters here, but this is a direct comparison between what Demolesz is currently planning to do at that intersection and in the far right column, what the anticipated change in activity would be associated with this project. And you'll see that the overall operations at that signal are at level of service C, which is well below capacity. There, depending on which movement you're looking at, the level of service and delay and letter grade designations change. So for instance, eastbound left turns from Route 20 experience a delay of 36 seconds, level of service D, that goes up by one second to 37 seconds, level of service D with the project, et cetera. The movement of particular interest is the southbound movements, which are designated to be level of service C and will remain level of service C with this project in place. Likewise, weekday evening peak hours, overall level of service D operation, left column continues at level of service D, right column with an overall intersection increase in delay of one second as a result of the project with no change in any of the levels of service. And on a Saturday, the same result at level of service C overall, remains C. So we're confident that what we're proposing to do as a use that's principally generating pass-by related trips will be adequately accommodated based on the current proposed design, as it's been submitted to MEPA, subject to peer review, and will be subject to upcoming MassDOT formal engineering permitting. I will point out that as you look at vehicle circulation restrictions that are purposely designed within the site, and we focus our attention on where diesel vehicles or underground storage tank refuel vehicles would need to circulate, they would be to the northerly portion of the site, you know, just to the left of where the retail building is located. The only way to get to that position is from the easterly Route 20 driveway, traveling behind the building, through that pad area, diesel high-speed fuel area, and then exiting directly to Route 20 as a right turn. If a vehicle of that size and dimension would even attempt a right turn movement within the site to return to Lake Street, they physically can't do it. The site is purposely designed to physically preclude the ability for a tractor-trailer, a larger tractor vehicle, to be able to get to Lake Street from within the site.
When you say physically can't, is there a... Are there bollards up?
I'll explain the swept path, which I've zoomed in a little bit more detail on. So you'll see a series of colored lines here, blues and greens. The blues would represent the trailer, front and rear bumper positions of the trailer or the cab. The green would indicate wheel paths. And you'll see below those colors where sidewalk elements are proposed, lighting fixtures, sidewalks, curbing, pedestrian crossings, and other features. You'll see that that sweep, to be able to properly make a maneuver as a right turn from that fuel position, would need to sweep over through the refuse bins, over a sidewalk, through a light pole, and would eventually, if it were, you know, physically intact, eventually get to Lake Street. It is not possible for a larger vehicle of that size and dimension, or even anything close to it, even a smaller articulated vehicle, to be able to physically make that movement. Now, that said, the site design has incorporated no truck entry signs to further reinforce the restriction. This is a site as a practical matter that will be used on a regular basis by commercial trucking entities that will be familiar with its operation, as they are with Flynn's Truck Stop and other locations along Route 20. So as a practical matter, no commercial truck driver would attempt that, and if they did, there would be signs and clear indication that they were restricted from doing so. So we're very comfortable that the design, as it's been advanced, will present no real chance of a truck accessing the site or leaving the site to or from the Lake Street side, notwithstanding that fire trucks, which have a different travel path through the site, have been specifically accommodated through the conversations and the coordination that we've had with the fire department. So we believe we've achieved both objectives, proper emergency response, circulation elements, and proper restrictions of where larger commercial vehicles would need and can travel within the property. The belt and suspenders to this is that the applicant, as was the case with Demolesz, will be subject and is committed to a post occupancy monitoring program. The proponent has no interest whatsoever in having a site that doesn't function well. It's not to their benefit or to the benefit of their potential patrons. There will be ample opportunity, once the site is operational, to measure its actual performance, not once, but over a series of five individual monitoring periods that cover a five-year span. That monitoring program will be memorialized as well as part of what's known as the Section 61 finding process through MassDOT, and we anticipate would be a condition of approval as well through this board. The premise of that would be that we not only look at traffic volume counts and patterns, but we also evaluate the operations of the driveways, the signal at Route 20, that we also look at the actual maneuvering and use by trucks and commercial vehicles within and throughout the site, and that we also look at safety trends, local crash records that relate to the driveways themselves and the site operations generally. All of that information would be reported to the town and MassDOT, and to the extent any aspect of the site operation, safety or operationally was an impediment either to Lake Street or Route 20, that remedial actions and countermeasures would be considered and evaluated in coordination with the town and MassDOT, as is the case with Demolesz. We strongly believe, on the basis of all of the analysis that we've submitted, that has been subject to peer review, that this site will work well, that it will in fact comply with applicable safety standards and criteria, including those that will be an obligation through the MassDOT permitting process. And finally, I guess that really concludes where we're at. Now, I understand, and we are in receipt of additional correspondence from Demolesz. We received that today. There's nothing in what Demolesz has submitted by way of additional commentary that would change or be modified as a result of what we've submitted and that has been subject to review at the MEPA level, or that we anticipate will undergo detailed MassDOT permitting in any of the requirements that they place on the design or operation of the driveways. We understand clearly the concern that they have had to operations of Lake Street. We believe strongly, and it bears out in the peer review process, that the access plan that we've developed, which was done in coordination with DOT, DOT specifically requiring and directing us to allow left turn movements onto Lake Street to afford efficiencies and good site operations, that all of that is appropriately placed as we currently see. There's no additional information that this applicant could possibly provide to this board that would provide any greater context of impact than what we've already submitted or that has been subject to peer review. So with that, I am absolutely glad to answer any specific questions any of the board members might have for the project.
So I think one of my first questions, I had looked through the sweeps that were provided of the sweep analysis, and one of the things I did note was that there didn't seem to be a sweep analysis for the back end of the site, for the diesel end of the site. So I guess that's one of my questions is, you know, is that something that was looked at, you know? Looking at all the worst-case scenarios here, you have a fire at one of those diesel stops back there. Is it possible to get a large fire truck back there to sweep into that location and maneuver around in the event of an emergency?
It's a great question. We actually provided all of the swept paths as part of prior submittals to the board. They were subject to review by the fire department as well. The only commentary that the fire department had on any of those sweeps, which included sweeps to the rear of the property, through the diesel pump area, through the canopy area, to the front of the property, using both driveways, as well as what I've just presented to this board, the only commentary that we received was the swept path impact to the Lake Street southbound lane, the exclusive left turn lane. It's the only comment we received that needed to be addressed. Earlier in March, I believe the week of the 7th, thereabouts, we had a conversation that included Louise at planning, as well as the safety operations engineer at the fire department. We reviewed that particular movement and what their position and request was, and we've directly addressed their comment with the new updated design. I understand that the fire department is now comfortable with that as a solution. It's addressed exactly what their concern was. So to your point, Madam Chair, was we've provided all of the swept path analyses for all vehicle types throughout and within the site as part of prior submitted materials, all of which are demonstrated to work.
Okay, thank you. Another question that I had, and I don't know if, so it's related to the general circulation within the site. I was noticing there doesn't seem to be, or it's not specifically called out on the site plan, area for deliveries, loading, unloading. Can we clarify where that is?
Yeah, let me do a share on the updated site plan. We do have CDC, Phil Henry on the call here, and I would ask Phil to actually walk us through that aspect of it. So let me do a share screen on that aspect of the... So let's see. Bear with me again. Phil, I'm going to do a share screen of the site plan. Okay, so Phil, take it away.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. To answer the question, this was brought up in our staff review via Zoom last week, and what we decided on was the, there's a striped area behind the convenience store that will serve as a refuge area for unloading and for deliveries of goods into the rear of the building. Based on our feedback with Chris and staff, that seemed like a reasonable option. We're happy to have a discussion about it on perhaps limiting delivery times, but we thought that was... But we thought that was a, a secure space. And I think that also meets the zoning, the zoning area for, for, for loading areas as well.
So the intention is to have loading and unloading crossing over two lanes of a drive-through to get into the convenience store?
That's correct. Yeah, that, that, that's a typical operation for, for a convenience store. What, what is unique or atypical about this particular design is that there's actually another lane of travel for, for tractor trailer deliveries behind it. But, but essentially, a typical convenience store layout would, would be such this, where you'd have a drive-through lane, a bypass lane, and then, and then a loading area.
One other question, then I'll turn it over to other members of the board. Is it, is, is there a need for two-lane drive-through?
The inside, the inside lane is for a drive-through, the actual order. And then there's a bypass lane, which is good, good industry standard practice. That, that lane will primarily not be used unless somebody wants to get out of the line.
Okay. Other members of the board have any questions, concerns, comments?
Just have one question. Your MEPA submittal, the, the latest one that you submitted, is that a single EIR or supplemental single EIR?
It is a single EIR. So we've filed what we would call a, an expanded environmental notification form. There were actually, quite frankly, very few comments on that expanded filing. The, the majority of the commentary really had to do with evaluating access alternatives for the property, which has been done. We've gone through an exhaustive process of looking at what if no access is provided to Lake Street? What if only a single point of access is provided to Route 20? And combinations thereof. And have determined, for very specific reasons, that what is currently before this board and that is documented within the single EIR represents the optimal design solution that accommodates the various, very specific functions of the site and the property. And, and that minimizes the impact of the Route 20 quarter and the signal at Lake Street. So that is a single EIR for which a certificate would be granted, allowing us to then proceed to Mass DOT access permitting. You know, and, and prior to even doing that, we'd, we'd have to get what is known as a Section 61 finding issued. So there's a rather rigorous process, quite frankly, that we still need to go through with Mass DOT subsequent to the MEPA process, that based on our consultation to date with DOT will land us at what is currently shown on, on the site plan.
Just one more. Do we have your response to the latest peer review comments in writing? Or is the presentation today is what you want us to consider for that?
Yeah, so we, we received this today, that the peer review letter. There was a little bit of a snafu apparently in, in how that got transmitted from, from Bowman. I did have a conversation with Bowman today about their commentary. They, it's actually a relatively clean letter. They, they concur with the access that we're showing on Route 20. They concur with our TDM, Transportation Demand Management Programming. They concur with our analysis as it's been presented. They understand as well that there is an improvement that is being advanced for Lake Street, which we've described and presented as the DeMullis improvement. The only questions that they had, and it, and it's an immaterial comment, is that they wanted to understand what things would look like in the future with the DeMullis improvements in place. And the response that I would have to that is that there would be no change in findings and results as a result of that exercise for the following reason. That the, the DeMullis improvement was specifically designed to accommodate a known existing condition today, which is a long queue on, on Lake Street. That queue will not be entirely mitigated. That there's no magic silver bullet solution to that, but the length or extent of that queue can be substantially reduced. And that the relative impact of our project, whether it's now or in the future, 10 years from now, represents that, you know, one to two-second overall change in delay. It's an immaterial impact, it's an immaterial change, whether you look at today's condition or something that exists 10 years from now. And so, you know, we don't find that there would be any useful purpose to looking at a condition, you know, and DeMullis certainly didn't do this in their own analysis, that would say what happens seven years from now on Lake Street. You know, the idea is that there need, there's a, an existing need that is being addressed and that the relative impact of our project to that proposal is de minimis. It, it, it will not change the characteristics, the outcome, the benefits of, of that particular improvement. That's the only comment they had. The, the only other aspect of Lake Street design that they opined on was, well, would it make sense to have an additional lane on Lake Street to get out? And I had this conversation with Jason today at Bowman and said, to the extent there are any long delays on the Lake Street driveway, if I want to get back to Lake Street North, I make a right turn onto Route 20 and a right turn at the, at the light to go north. That's, that's the most efficient way to go out there, if there's any level of delay in that driveway. There's physically not enough room, nor would we recommend adding more lanes to the approach to Lake Street. We don't believe it's necessary. It would promote, I think, confusion in how people use the driveway. That's a relatively shallow driveway. Widening it out further wouldn't be necessary to have a proper operation. There are alternatives and means for patrons to efficiently use the site if there are any delays in that driveway.
So when you say additional driveway, you are referring to your own driveway, not additional lane on Lake Street, right?
Correct. Only on our driveway. Yeah, absolutely. We understand through DeMullis' ongoing coordination with DOT, and we've had these conversations with, with District Office as well, is that there aren't any viable means of, of adding lanes to, to Lake Street. That's just not a viable option. There, there are land constraints, property constraints that prohibit that from happening. And, and quite frankly, you know, the improvement that's being advanced isn't necessarily going to be a magic silver bullet solution either, right? It's not going to magically mean that you only wait in a queue that's three cars long. That queue today can, can go back, I've heard, better part of, you know, eighth of a mile, or sometimes more. That will be substantially reduced under that program. Now, our project, and I'll, I'll, I'll stress this again, is a facility of convenience. If someone knows that Lake Street backs up in the weekday evening peak hours and that you have a long queue like that, their discretion to go to the site for a car wash, or a cup of coffee, or a convenience item, or to refuel their car is going to be impacted. Consumers have choices. And I can represent it as a traffic engineer, that engineering is to some degree an art and a science. And there are practicalities of how we need to assess impact for a project. It would be disingenuous to suggest that people are robots and would necessarily consciously decide to travel to a site, which is a discretionary transaction, knowing that they're going to have a lot of headaches doing so. And the premise of everything that we presented today, and this is borne out by industry statistics, shows that these types of projects, gas projects, car washes, coffee shops, and drive-throughs are facilities of convenience. They're typically drawing traffic from people who are already in the area. We already have shown that the vast majority of all trip making will be to or from Route 20. Lake Street will sustain an impact from this project. We've evaluated that in multiple ways, including in our most recent assessment, and have clearly demonstrated that we have a de minimis impact to Lake Street. And I will reinforce again that you don't need to believe me, but believe the monitoring. And that was the same case for, for DeMullis. Trust but verify is, is the mantra here. The applicant has no interest in having a site that doesn't function well and safely. I, as an engineer, have no interest in designing a site that doesn't operate safely and efficiently. And the backup to that is the monitoring program and the commitment to mitigate and remediate any potential safety and operational issues that are directly related to this property. That said, I will also point out that DeMullis will have a continued responsibility under its own permit. It's a Section 61 finding and, and local permit to continue monitoring the operations of that same location at Route 20. The reason those improvements are being affected and advanced are not because of anyone other than DeMullis. They have a substantial material impact on Lake Street that goes well beyond the impact that they evaluated in their own studies. They are on the hook for mitigating that. This project is not avoiding the responsibility of ensuring that safe and efficient travel can happen to or from this property. That is a commitment and will be memorialized in the, in the monitoring. But we also acknowledge that we are not the problem. And we would point to the continued responsibility for DeMullis to continue to monitor in accordance with their own permits and obligations to ensure that what they are proposing to do actually functions the way that they intend it to function. That is clearly on their shoulders.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Do you know anything?
Just a quick question. You might have said that before, but fuel trucks coming in, and there's an accidental spill. Will there be mitigation plans in place for that?
And I'll, I'll welcome any input that Phil would, would offer as well. But the design of the, the facility is such that, at least in the refueling areas, the pads themselves are designed for interstitial areas that will allow for the retention of any spilled fuel product. And there are, I believe by fire code requirements, obligations for fire suppression and other safety-related features that relate to the operations of those types of facilities, right? Now, clearly, if an emergency response were required, the design is designed to facilitate that response by the fire department, which is why we do the swept path analysis to make sure that those fire apparatus or emergency responding vehicles can get to the rear of the site. If they can't get to the rear of the site because of some incident, they can get to the rear from the front portion of the site, right? So there are multiple means of getting to every aspect, every area of the site by those responding vehicles. But you know, there, there are safety requirements that are inherently built into the design of the refueling facilities by way of pad design, fire suppression systems, and other features.
Thank you.
Chris, I don't know if this is a fair question, but the, the DeMullis improvements, do, is there a schedule for that work to occur? Do we have that?
Sorry, I'd have, I'd have to go back to the specific decision to outline that schedule. So I don't have the specific dates, but I believe there is a schedule that's established, yeah.
Okay. Just be interesting to see from like a timing perspective as well.
Yeah, so through the chair, I might also comment on that and that this site will take a number of months, probably 18 to 24 months to come online following receipt of all permits and entitlements. I would fully expect, based on my own conversations with DOT and the town, that those improvements to Lake Street would be in place well before any opening or operation of the site. And in fact, the monitoring program that we're, that the applicant is committing to would, as a baseline, conduct its own traffic counts at, at the time that those improvements were, were completed so that there's a baseline, a starting point against which the impact of the project can be compared. So before and after, if you will. So we're as interested in having those improvements done, which should be easily accomplished within that two, two-year window, so that it, it sets the, the base for monitoring.
Okay. All right. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jared Fury from Prince Lobel on behalf of DeMullis Supermarkets, Inc. With me again tonight is Carmen Tomas of DeMullis Supermarkets, Inc. and Michael Santos of VHB. Mr. Nagy, who's been here in the past, was unable to be here tonight. We did submit a letter to the town today. I hope the boards in receipt of that had an opportunity to look at it. And included in that importantly is Mr. Nagy's technical review of what's been presented so far. This is now our third month, I believe, making public comments on this particular issue. And we were here last month in which we detailed significant ongoing concerns, in particular to the exit onto Route 20, the exit onto Lake Street. And what I didn't hear tonight was anything that in particular addressed those concerns. I don't want to reiterate them again because we went on for some time last time about those. I believe the board is well aware of them. But I didn't hear the applicant address any of those tonight with any actual changes as to those concerns and how they were going to address them. What is different from last month is that we were awaiting the peer review, as you may recall. That did come out on March 28th, I believe. And importantly, as we've noted in our letter, the peer review was not, I wouldn't call it a favorable review as Attorney O'Neill has described it for the applicant. I would disagree with that characterization. Significantly, Bowman had identified in the March 28th peer review, quote, "The applicant should explore additional improvements at the Lake Street driveway to improve operations for vehicles existing, exiting from the site," end quote. And so that just came out less than a week ago. Didn't hear tonight any analysis of improvements at that driveway. Mr. Micho identified that he just received it today and in the hours since apparently has made the determination that there are some impracticalities there and no reason to make any other changes. There was some discussion about an additional lane, but respectfully, it ought to be considered and presented so that it can undergo further peer review as to what improvements, if any, ought to be addressed at that particular location. As you know, we still have concerns about the queuing that goes on there. Mr. Micho identified tonight it goes on for an eighth of a mile at a time. And there are some improvements that are planned with DeMullis for that light, but it extends well beyond the proposed driveway now. And so we haven't had any addressment by the applicant as to how that will change in the future. And really the concern for gridlock. So there's been identification that, you know, DeMullis has contributed to the traffic on Lake Street. And obviously, that's true with the development there. But DeMullis doesn't contribute to any potential gridlock that goes on right there because there isn't a driveway that exists today and no project that exists today. That's the real concern, is how will this driveway and cars and trucks exiting from that contribute to gridlock and cause congestion in that area? Lake Street, as you know, is a town street, not a highway that's subject to Mass DOT. So it's the board's determination as to the, the safety of that street. As to the technical aspects of it, I'll rely on what Mr. Nagy has identified in his letter. Of course, Mr. Santos is here to answer any of your questions as to our technical concerns there as well. But what also has developed in the last month is we had the opportunity to go back and look at what the applicant presented to the zoning board of appeals. And I fully understand this is not the same audience, it's not the same board. But the representations made are significant because it's the applicant who stated them at the time. I'll just mention them quickly, although they are in our letter that we submitted today. But there was discussion about the left-hand turn onto Route 20 and what would happen if that went away. This is the September 30th, 2024 ZBA hearing. And Mr. Micho said, quote, "That left turn, if it were not provided, would have the potential for secondary impacts, unintended impacts that could either mean an increase in traffic to Lake Street to get to the signal to make that left turn, or more likely, someone making a right turn to get into the left turn lane at the signal on Route 20 to turn left into the Plaza, to go through the Plaza, to get to the East Hurley driveway at the Plaza to continue their trip," end quote. He also mentioned later in the hearing, quote, "I mentioned unintended consequences of anything that's developed here. To the extent a left turn is not allowed, folks will have to rely on..." To the extent a left turn is not allowed, folks will have to rely on Lake Street more regularly, or would most likely use the Plaza as a staging point to be able to continue their trip eastbound. I don't think those conditions are ideal," end quote. And I raise this because it's obviously an issue for DeMullis. My client can't have their parking lot becoming a thoroughfare for tractor trailers in particular, but other vehicle traffic going through their parking lot to get back in an easterly direction. And, you know, I understand we've submitted this today, but these issues have long been known by the applicant, admitted by the traffic engineer that's been hired on behalf of the applicant, and under our consideration have not been addressed appropriately. And so respectfully, we would ask that the hearing be continued so that these issues can continue to be developed, discussed. Peer review can continue to be involved. The planning department can be involved so that these issues are fully addressed because respectfully, they were not tonight in the hours since they got the peer review. If you have any technical questions, again, Mr. Santos is here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say, in terms of the focus should be on the monitoring, which is going to take place after the operation proceeds, so that if there were any adverse impacts on Lake Street, we'll know where we are after they've improved. The situation that they're there right now has absolutely nothing, obviously, to do with us. And they need to address that, and that was part of their conditions of their approval. We're happy to accept the same conditions in our approval so that both sides are operating on the same framework in terms of if your actions that you're taking or your activity impacts, you know, the traffic in an adverse way, then that's part of the monitoring process is to make sure that you do something about it. So I think that that sort of addresses itself and you, all of this, again, we're anticipating that these corrections that they will be making, well in advance of anything that operates on our site, you know, will be in place and will be alleviating that problem to the extent that it can be alleviated. As pointed out, it's never going to go away completely, but we're talking about the number of users that leave our site that go and to use Lake Street is minimal. And we don't think there is an impact, but if there is an impact, it'll show up in the monitoring and we'll have to address that. In terms of the other observations, in terms of previous meetings that we had, a lot of this is hypothetical questions in terms of what if we were, you know, agreed that we would not pursue a left turn onto Route 20? And now it's being pointed out, there's a problem with right turns onto Route 20 as And, you know, Route 20 can certainly accommodate a development of some sort at this site. The customers that we expect that would be using this site are pretty much already there and they're already driving by. You know, I mean, maybe if, you know, a customer that we have may decide they want to go to Market Basket, which I think would probably be a good thing for them. And people who are Market Basket may want to visit our site as well so that there's a sort of a synergy between the two of them. But the idea that you can have another development that, you know, and the roads aren't adequate to accommodate anything other than what's there. So it just, Market Basket should be the only use on that entire stretch of Route 20 because somebody else is going to generate some additional traffic. We've submitted, you know, our analysis, the peer review has reviewed this. The remaining comment regarding, consider, for example, Mr. Micho had mentioned, consider another lane on Lake Street. Well, it, he's already indicated it can't be done. So the consideration is that it can't be done. So the idea of continuing this for a further peer review, it just seems to me that we've addressed all of the significant questions that have been posed and that the, at some point, you know, enough should be enough in terms of responding to the comments. The comment, the letter from Bowman is just about as positive as they get in terms of overall, the comments that are made support everything that we've submitted. And I don't, I mean, if the board feels otherwise, and obviously that's your prerogative and we would want you to do that if there's any doubt which you feel would interfere with your making the decision on this tonight. But the, I think all the facts are in. And the remaining questions at this point are, I mean, there are questions that in the letter that point out that questioned the design of the entrance, which has been specifically designed to frustrate anyone who wanted to make a left-hand turn. And as I understand, it's the exact same design that they used on their site. So it just seems that the more we do, the responses look for something else to complain about.
I might also add through the chair that the, Mr. Fury, it indicated that there was a technical analysis that's been presented by VHB. There is no such technical analysis. There's no level of service analysis. There's no swept path analysis. There's nothing to suggest that what their commentary is, is anything other than a what if. And, you know, the fact that the Lake Street driveway is 120 feet from Route 20 is a well-established fact. It was an established fact in the prior application for development of this parcel by others. DeMullis did not raise concern or issue with that prior proposal in any testimony that I'm aware of. DOT and our consultation with them expressly requested that we design that driveway as a full-axis driveway to afford flexibility and options for folks who would be leaving the site to have a choice as to whether or not they wanted to make a left turn at the light via Lake Street or continue west on Route 20. So, you know, we've done everything that we've been asked to do. The commentary and peer review did not relate to additional lanes on Lake Street. It related to considering an additional right-turn lane on the Lake Street driveway to facilitate right-turn movements from the site to go north on Lake Street. That's physically not possible. It's not necessary. The design of the driveway on Route 20 specifically provides a direct means of access to Lake Street North via Route 20 in a very efficient way that would allow any of the patrons destined to, you know, Route 9 eventually, to do so efficiently without having to rely on a Lake Street driveway. So if there are delays at all on that driveway, which we've analyzed, so that's the actual analysis that's been submitted, shows an average queue of two cars, not 10. It shows that to the extent there are queues or delays that periodically occur, the likelihood is that an alternative means of egress from the site will be chosen. And as it relates to the driveway on Route 20, as Attorney O'Neill points out, the design of that right-turn movement out is identical to what was designed for the easterly driveway at Edgemere Plaza. That has a 40-foot opening. If someone wants to physically make a left turn there, they could do it. Their own monitoring shows that that has not been an issue or a problem. So there is no additional analysis that we could present to the board that would result in any other conclusion than we presented to date. I see no merit in evaluating whether or not a right-turn lane onto Lake Street has any merit. It doesn't. It's not needed. It's physically not possible, and it would delay process further for no meaningful purpose.
Other members? Mr. Fury?
Thank you. Won't go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Because respect your time. Two quick points. One, it's been pointed out that what Market Basket has been allowed to do, this applicant should be allowed to do. If you look at the VHB letter submitted by Mr. Nagy today, he identifies that the current proposal for the Route 20 driveway that restricts a left-hand turn from this proposal site is not the same as the one that Market Basket put in. And he suggests they be required to put in the exact same one that Market Basket had to put in, which has shown historically to successfully limit left-hand turns onto Route 20 from the Market Basket Plaza, and it could do the same for this Plaza. So there's some considerations there that we're asking for. But respectfully, this letter from peer review, it might be almost as good as you could get. It might be a good letter, but it's not complete. It identifies that the applicant should consider other things, and the applicant has not done that, which is why we ask that the conversation continue and that peer review be involved and the applicant come back and consider other alternatives with Lake Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, are there any comments from the town side of things?
No. So as was represented and likewise, I'll give it very brief. We did meet with the applicant and their team to review the planning board comment letter that our office has provided. I think the peer review has been thoroughly vetted this evening. But in regards to our letter, we did go through that pretty extensively. I am comfortable that the remaining comments from our letter could be handled by conditions of approval. I do note that with that, I do have a draft decision that has been prepared and is substantially mature with the conversations that have had, that we've had. Obviously have not incorporated the discussion this evening or the correspondence that's been received today. So with that, I think that, you know, there are some edits that can be made, but I am prepared to kind of distribute that, whether the board wants to review that, if the applicants and DeMullis representatives want to review that as well. I'm happy to provide that to them. I don't know if the conditions and discussion around that will provide some clarity around this, but I'm happy to advance that conversation if that's something that the applicant and the board are willing to consider.
And if that's something, then does that, would that mean that we should keep this public hearing open? So that there's full consideration of those conditions or?
So it would be the pleasure of the board. So if the board would like to incorporate comments from, you know, additional comments on that draft decision from the board and from DeMullis and from residents, I'm happy to provide that publicly and we can take comments on that. If the board would prefer to deliberate outside of that discussion and simply deliberate on the draft decision with the information that's been presented to this point, then we would close the hearing. But I defer to the board, which is most appropriate. And given the discussion this evening, my recommendation would be to continue. I think there is some interest in advancing that conversation, and I don't know if by the May meeting that we'd be able to resolve everything, but I'm willing to present that draft decision and see if that gets us anywhere closer.
Other members of the board, thoughts on continuance this evening or closing the
I think I would prefer that it continue, given what the discussion today and then in addition, we are so close to MEPA issuing their decision. So I think it probably might help us, I think.
I second that.
All right. So I think, appreciate the comments. I think this has been a helpful presentation this evening. I think it would make sense to look at continuing until the May hearing so that we can really, truly flush out the information from this evening as well as the Bowman peer review that was just received a couple of days ago and really, truly be able to dig into it and make the most efficient responses on this. So is there a motion on the table?
We do have to get the applicant's feedback on it.
Okay.
They would have to request that.
Sure. I mean, we're fine with that. I mean, I understand that, you know, we're very close to getting the MEPA approval, which we expect, you know, any day now. And I think that the additional comment that would be required from the peer review is clearly we can get that. And if that's the only, you know, remaining question that persists, then we could, you know, perhaps maybe ask them also to opine on the, I think they've already done it because they had a problem with the central entry of Route 20. But maybe they need to just address that directly and say that, you know, they're looking at it and they don't have a problem with it. Or, you know, whatever it is that would satisfy the board that, you know, our design is, you know, functional and it's going to work. So I'm happy to postpone to the, or continue to the next meeting. And in terms of if during the interim, that would give us an opportunity to further look at the draft decision that might be approved at the next meeting, then, you know, that would be a good process as well, just so that we've got no surprises other than whatever the vote is by the board at that meeting.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, board.
All right. Is there a motion to continue this hearing until the May 1st meeting?
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up this evening, the proposed common driveway, excuse me, special permit for 334, 338, and 338R Grafton Street. This is a new public hearing. I'm going to give my clerk an opportunity to come back and then do, then read it.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the selectman's hearing room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue. We hear the application of Dan Matt Realty LLC, 339 Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. 01545, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7 L1, for a special permit by the planning board to allow for the construction of a 2,700 square foot garage and auto repair shop at 334 Grafton Street and a common driveway. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled, quote, "Site Development Plan for 334, 338, and 338R," end quote, on 10 sheets dated February 4th, 2025, prepared by J.M. Grenier Associates Incorporated, 118 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. 01772, stamped by Carlos Ferreira Civil P.E. Subject project is southerly of Route 9 and westerly of Grafton Street and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury's Assessor's Tax Plate 34, plot 02900003000034000. A copy of the application, plans, and reports may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the planning board website at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash shrewsbury.gov forward slash 1202 forward slash ongoing projects before planning board.
Thank you. Mr. Rickert?
Thank you. To the chair and respectfully to the members.
Thank you, to the chair and respectfully to the members. I know it's been a long night. I'll try to be quick. For the record, my name is Richard Rickert. I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue, and I'm here with John Granier, who is our engineering consultant for this particular proposal. Paul Gardett is seated behind me. He's the principal of Dan Matt, which is the applicant. We have, for this particular proposal, been before the ZBA on a few occasions. And we have gone through the common driveway proposal with the ZBA at least twice, maybe three times. And now we find ourselves here after having completed that process. There were delays in this process through the years. We had some COVID issues, as we all recall, during the process. And there were other issues that Mr. Gardett faced going forward. So with particular attention to this property, Paul has, by the way, been, he's a resident of Shrewsbury for 60 years. He's owned businesses here. He has, he is the holder of a Class II license as well as a garage license. He owns the property to the front of this site, nudging a little towards Route 9 up until a couple, a few years ago, where he operated his business at that time for many years. He purchased this site about the same time as he sold that site, moved over here. He also lives in the neighborhood, actually across the street from this particular site. So he's been there. He has been doing business in this neighborhood for quite a few years. And maybe John could now explain what we're dealing with in terms of engineering.
Yes, so this site right now, where the common driveway is proposed, it is on three parcels. There is an existing 40-foot-wide easement that runs along the sideline of 338 Grafton Street. Then there is the existing house at 334, which that driveway provides access to. And then there is the third parcel, which is 338R, which has the greenhouse structure on it, which is isolated to the west of these properties. So what we are proposing to do is to develop what would be the northerly portion of 334 Grafton Street. The, as you can see, there is a zone line that segments the southerly portion, which is in a residence A-zone, and then the northerly portion is within the commercial business zone. That northerly portion abuts the, the...
Home Depot.
Home Depot. How can I forget that? I'm there like 10 times a week. That abuts Home Depot, which is to the west. That's up the hill. And then it also abuts a commercial building at 328 on the easterly side. That gets access, the abutting property off of Grafton Street. So what we are proposing to do is to reconfigure the driveway as a common driveway. That would be 22 feet wide. That would go up the sideline within the existing 40-foot-wide easement area. It would go around the existing number 334, which is a residential structure, to that backfield area where he would like to construct a, it's going to be a 2,400-square-foot garage with a small, little 20-by-15 office off to the side of it. So he would have the ability to do some minor repairs on cars, have a little office there, and then have, on the westerly portion in that parking lot, have some display spaces for some vehicles over there. We...
He does do his car sales by appointment. He doesn't advertise for people to just come and look at his cars. So, and he's been doing that for years.
So what we did was design a driveway that had adequate access for emergency vehicles. It's 22 feet wide, which is what the requirement is for access for a common driveway, for a commercial common driveway. Then that would provide access to the rear portion of the site. We are capturing the runoff from the common driveway through an infiltration trench that is going to be on the easterly side of the driveway. And then from the parking lot area, in the building area, we have a small infiltration basin that would be on the easterly side of the property. And if that were to overflow, that would go down a channel that goes into the drainage system for the existing, or the proposed driveway, rather. This has been peer reviewed by Graves Engineering for the most part. We have a clean bill of health. What they did want us to do was to provide some additional soil testing on the site. We were, there was testing on the site for the septic system that is there. So we were looking for seasonal high groundwater, which it is consistent soils in there, to be similar to that that was done for the soil testing, for the septic system on the site. They suggested that we provide some additional testing in the area of the basin, which obviously we're fine with doing that. The other question or comment from Graves Engineering is, there is a little parking area on the existing driveway that services number 338. That's the house to the south of the driveway. And the plan is to, with their existing curb cut, which is outside the easement, use that existing curb cut and provide a parking area for two spots, separate from the common driveway, that would provide parking for 338. And Paul has had conversations with the neighbor on that. They've been apprised of everything that is proposed here. Actually, they're technically an applicant because the driveway goes through an easement on their property. So they have been part of this process, and Paul has worked out that. But that's something that we would show on this plan, just to show that we are replacing that parking separately from the proposed common driveway. There were some other items that were part of some of the review. We just got these, you know, yesterday and within the past couple of days. We've reviewed all of those other comments. Nothing looks like it would change the design or layout for this project. We will be talking to make sure with the DPW and with the Sewer and Water Department regarding service connections. There are existing water connections, but that service, the existing house at 334. But we would be upgrading, providing additional service connections for the garage building in the back. So I'm assuming all of this was obviously submitted and reviewed, but we haven't gotten any comments back from them. So we'll be reaching out to some of the Sewer and Water Department and making sure that they're okay with what we're proposing for service connections, et cetera. So again, we don't see anything that would make any changes to the proposal, to the layout, to the grading. I think it's more just crossing our i's and dotting our t's.
We did meet with the fire department as well, and they were satisfied.
So I think that's the long and short of it. If there's any questions or comments, we'd like to address them.
So I have a question for you related to utilities. So I see that there, you had said that there is an existing septic system on the site.
Yes.
So is the intention then, with this new garage facility, would this be installing a new sewer, excuse me, a new septic system? Or am I seeing there's a connection from the garage to this septic system?
Yeah, so the septic system, Paul has just installed that within the past couple of years. And actually, nobody has been in that house. It hasn't even been used. That does have a four-bedroom design. It is a three-bedroom house. So, and he did that in anticipation of some future garage building going on this. And he actually left a stub, so a TY, which could service that building. Now, that building, minimal flow. It's a small, little 15-by-20 square foot office. And then maybe a person or two that would be doing any work in there. The flow generated by that would be much less than what would be from an additional bedroom. Typically, a bedroom for a house, it's 110 gallons a day per bedroom. So they have an additional 110 gallons a day factored into the design of the existing system, which was just installed the past couple of years. So that would be more than sufficient for the flow that would be generated from the commercial building. And we will be confirming that with the Board of Health as well. And actually, when Paul was telling me, the inspector at the time, who, there has been a change in staff, but he had relayed that to the inspector at the time, and they said, yeah, that's, you'll have plenty of flow for, if you do a garage building back there. But again, we'll loop back with the Board of Health, then just confirm that with them.
Okay, thank you. Are there board questions, comments?
Just a clarification question. So you are saying the home itself is a three-bedroom home there, but the septic system was designed for four-bedroom capacity?
Designed and installed for capacity for a four-bedroom.
Okay. And that was approved by the Board of Health, Shrewsbury, or Health Department?
So what we would do is go back to the Board of Health and give them the appropriate calculation, which this is probably, you know, 30, 40 gallons a day max coming out of that building, and just demonstrate, so it's on record that the system as it is has capacity for the, for the commercial building in the back.
So there's not going to be any need for additional septic system on this?
Correct.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, so.
One quick question. The proposed one-inch line, water line that you have, about 100-some feet going uphill, is that enough, you think?
We believe so. There's going to be maybe one bathroom in that little office. No, nothing like kitchens, you know, nothing that's...
Animal use.
No, yeah. No kitchens, no showers, no laundry, no nothing. It's going to service one small bathroom.
Sure.
Chris, do you have?
No, as mentioned, I think there's some follow-up with some of the departments ongoing. I know we have reviewed it. I don't, I was unable to prepare a formal comment letter yet. We did receive some peer review comments back as well. And, you know, I anticipate those to be addressed. But by and large, I think those are, you know, pretty inclusive of, you know, of our comments. I'll be happy to issue that comment letter in the next couple of weeks, or a week or so.
And in the meantime, we'll coordinate with Graves Engineering to have them come out to the site, witness testing in there, and then that'll just confirm that we have adequate separation of groundwater and what the soils are out there. But there are consistent soils out there. We don't anticipate that would be anything different than the soils that were found when he did the septic system.
And we will respond timely to that comment letter.
And just for clarification, the way that it, the way that, I know it's labeled Grafton Street, but the way these properties are on Grafton Street, there's Grafton Street, and then it almost looks like this is a private driveway that comes in to serve these homes, you know, 330, 338, 334, et cetera. But in fact, this is Grafton Street as far as the town is concerned. Is that correct?
Yes.
That was the original road.
That was the original Grafton Road.
That's where the easement.
Do you, the length of the driveway in total, do you know what it is, up to the new garage, proposed garage?
Yeah, I have, if you look at one of the other ladder sheets, there's a profile on there. So the common, the common portion of it, which is, as soon as it stops servicing, you know, the other...
The residences?
The other residences, that's the common portion. So that portion is, just call it 300 feet. Which if you look, there's a stationing on that profile.
Yeah.
If you look at the top of the sheet.
Yeah.
You look, we have stationing from zero, and then the 299 is where it hits the property line, where it's going to be just servicing the garage.
Okay, because 300 is max, right, for a common driveway for residences?
And I, yes, but I'd also like to point out, when they went into the zoning board, they also, because you're going through a residential zone to go into a commercial zone. So that was why, that was one of the reasons why they were going in front of the zoning board. At that time, they also received waivers on the exact requirements for a common driveway. And what was driving that is the driveway that goes up there now. It already services number 334. So if you started fooling around with a lot of the grades and everything else, it would, it would preclude the access to the existing house at 334. With that said, we made sure for fire, you know, and emergency vehicles, we are 22 feet wide, which is, you know, there may be some elevation variations from what is for a common driveway. But in terms of access for safety vehicles, we're at the 22 feet wide, which is the most important.
And certainly from that 299 point on, it's less than, it's a heck of a lot, less than 1,500 feet to the garage.
Oh, yeah.
Any, my, and my last question is, are there any concerns from the board's perspective on the sale of this property? If it's the, if it's essentially, if it's two buildings on the same parcel in the future? If the house was to go for sale, but the garage isn't, what happens then?
Paul's going to have a piece of property on his hands that he's going to have to deal with. It's on the same parcel, so you sell one, you sell everything.
Should there be a condition as such? I don't know.
He's not going to be able to get an A&R.
Talking about the greenhouse lot?
Exactly, yeah. You wouldn't be able to get an A&R for that. Zoning-wise, you have what you have for frontage right now. You wouldn't be able to provide any, any frontage for that back, for that back field area. Now, and we do want to note that there is a separate parcel, the 338R, which is the greenhouse lot. That has, that has, that's...
It's had the greenhouses on it for, historically, for many years, and it's got a shed house attached to it. And so that would also, I believe the intention is that eventually that could be a replacement of the greenhouse and a request to put a house there for his daughter.
But that's, that's not part of this, but for full transparency, we're saying that.
Where's the, where's the frontage?
That doesn't have any frontage.
Doesn't have any.
And it's always, it's been an existing nonconforming, and it predates zoning.
It does.
Did this go to conservation, or was the erosion control just part of the site plan?
Part of the site plan.
Okay.
And that's, you know, erosion control, that's standard on, on everything. And additionally, we're going to have to get a stormwater permit from the DPW as part of the process as well. But everything we do on here is standard, standard practice, standard operating procedure.
Sir, if you could just come up to the podium.
I'm Paul Gardett, and this is my project. I just wanted to address the house and the garage being on the same lot. I have no intention of trying to separate those. Okay, I mean, that's, the house is going to be with the garage as long as I own the property.
Okay.
So there's, there's no intention to subdivide that lot.
Not that you could.
Exactly.
All right, anyone else? So I think, based on, of course, your comments, um, it sounds like you should plan to continue this, um, hearing until the next meeting, until the May first meeting. Is there a-
Can you speak?
Oh, yes, I, my apologies, my apologies. Sorry about that, yes, sir.
Chris Benici, three fifty-four Grafton Street, I'm in Abada. I guess I have multiple questions. I don't know if this is the form to ask them, but, uh, number one, I'm, I'm kinda confused as to where this building is going to go on the property. Property is actually removed up off of Grafton Street, and there's multiple buildings on the property. I'm not sure as to, as to which side of the quote-unquote driveway where these buildings are going to be located on the property, that's number one. Number two, if I heard correctly, a portion of the property is owned commercial, and a portion of the property is owned residential. So it would, would have to be, go through the, uh, the zoning board to get a special permit to allow it to be all commercial as opposed to part residential? With question number two. Question number three, I have a question about if it's a garage. We have issues with runoff. We had multiple, multiple issues with Home Depot with runoff and hazardous waste and runoff. Where that runoff is gonna go from a garage standpoint? And number four, not only is it gonna be a garage, it's gonna be a car lot as well. It's gonna have auto sales up there as well. Also, what are the hours of operation? You're in a regi- residential neighborhood. Part of it's residential, part of it's gonna be commercial. What are my hours of operation? It's gonna be directly behind my neighbor's home. It's gonna be across the street from my home. I don't, I, I don't know the answer to any of these questions. I don't see a visual as to where the, these buildings are going onto the property. There was no visual presented. Do you want the plans or?
If we can put the, uh, the layout plan, layout plan probably would-
I, I don't, I know where the greenhouses were, I know where the house was up from the years and years ago, when they had the greenhouse up there. And where I can see the greenhouse from my home. I don't know where the garage is going to go in reference to that.
There you go.
Okay.
I'll step back. Can I?
Yes.
So, um, best way to do this would be, not to turn your mic back to you.
No, you're, you're fine.
Here's the existing house, okay? Here's the greenhouse. Here's the driveway coming up from, this is Grafton Street here.
Okay.
Okay? The driveway comes up, and comes over here, this is where the garage would be. Home Depot is right here.
So where's the access road to Home Depot?
Uh, that's way down here. That's way, way, that's way down the-
The greenhouse lot, way in the back corner.
Home Depot on the left-hand corner.
Right, their access road is somewhere up, up here. And, and that driveway is further down this road. Can you take a break?
I'm confused as to where the drive, where the, where the driveway coming in off of Grafton Street is.
Okay, here we go. Here is, here's Grafton Street where it comes around, okay? The, the Home Depot driveway down here.
So you're not coming off of Grafton Street, you're coming off of that little inlet that comes off of Grafton Street to the right.
The old Grafton Street, right.
Okay, so you're not coming off of Grafton Street.
Well, you come off of Grafton Street here, onto, into here, right.
So you're technically, again, you're not coming off of Grafton Street.
I think they're both labeled Grafton.
They're, they're both Grafton Street. That's the, the old Grafton Street, and it's that kind of jug handle that, that spurs off.
Jugs off to the right.
Correct.
You have to jog off to the right, come up a little ways, and then it goes up.
This is the, this is, this is the existing driveway.
Okay.
Here's the greenhouse. The driveway would come around the house, and then up, up here, where the building would be.
And what's, what's that gray parcel to your left? See where it says?
That's Home Depot, right there.
That's the back parking lot of Home Depot.
That's the building, that's the Home Depot building.
Okay, there's the access road, so, so-
It's down here, it's down here.
And the, the greenhouse almost comes to the Home Depot road.
Correct.
The lot, the greenhouse.
Right, here's your access road.
Richard, can we just make sure, if you, I know that it, you're trying to make that presentation, but also we need to make sure that we're picking up the microphone too.
Thank you, sorry.
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 Gotta do some dancing over there, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so, um, basically, yes, you have Grafton Street here. You, you have the other, the old Grafton Street comes off of it, okay? You come off this driveway here, and then the, the new driveway will come around up to the steel area here, which busts the Home Depot parcel. That's where the garage would be. And I hope you heard that.
I heard it.
Okay. Are we clear? Yes? Okay. With respect to the, if I could address the other questions?
Yes.
Uh, with respect to the, um, zoning, we've been to the zoning board. We, we, we went through, uh, several meetings with the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, on at least two occasions, maybe three. Um, uh, one time, uh, the permits actually expired, so we can't, we had to come back and, and do it all over again. Um, and that was during that COVID period. The, um, and they did address the issue of the common driveway and the fact that it was a non-conforming, uh, common driveway, and that it was, it was running through residential and commercial. Um, and so they did give us the permit for that. Um, with respect to the-
Richard, they also gave you the permit for the-
For the horizontal-
Expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming use?
They did, yes. Uh, because the lot was non-conforming, I asked for a special permit for that. Uh, because, uh, this was a horizontal mixed use now, because of the, um, the two uses on the property, we asked for a permit for that, and that was granted. Um, and there were a couple of other variances that were, that were in there. Um, with respect to the drainage, that needs to be addressed, uh, by engineering, as we all know. Um, we can't have more flow off of the site, uh, after a development than is, exists there now. Uh, John's gonna have to go forward with a stormwater, uh, permit, um, process and address the drainage in any event. Um, as far as the car lot goes, it's not, uh, it's, he's, he's got the license. He's still selling cars occasionally, that's what he does. Uh, again, he does it by appointment, um, and he has never had a, a, a car lot with flags and advertising and things of that nature. Just, he just doesn't do it, right, Paul?
I mean, you wouldn't see it.
Right, you wouldn't see it, it's not the kind of place for that at all. Um, um, and, um, he's just never done that.
Selectmen regulate the hours of operation, the class two license.
The, the selectmen, uh, uh, I, I forget what, I forget what they are, but, um, yes, they are on the license, uh, the hours of operation for the, for the car lot. If you give me a minute here, I'll see if I have it in my- My recol- my recollection was that it was, it was, uh, it was normal business hours of like eight to, to five or something on, on weekdays, and then Saturday mornings.
But it was at this site, right? It was?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that, that was advertised, it went through the Board of Selectmen. It's been, it's been, he's had the license renewed over and over again.
Okay, thank you.
Never, never a complaint.
Thank you. Um, any other members of the community wishing to speak on this item this evening? And again, sir, I apologize for that, I should've allowed you to speak on that before. Okay, seeing none, um, I think at this point, we're looking for a motion to continue this hearing.
A move that we continue the, uh, public hearing on the, uh, three thirty-four, three thirty-eight, and, uh, three thirty-eight R Grafton Street, Common Driveway Special Permit until Thursday, May first, at seven P M. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, I tried to be brief. Have a good night.
Good night.
Next up, proposed commercial building site plan approval and special permit for one fifteen northeast, uh, I'm sorry, for, uh, three sixty-nine, three seventy-seven Holden Street?
Okay, I'll read the notes.
Yep, sorry.
Oh, sorry. The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, April third, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. in the Selectmen's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Jocheroni Melachus D. Trustee, one West Boylston Street, Suite LL zero five, Worcester, Mass. zero one six zero five, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section seven F three, for site plan approval and special permit to Section six C four by the Planning Board to allow for the construction of two commercial buildings with parking, one twelve thousand square foot building and a fifty thousand square foot building, as well as commercial loading areas, individual septic systems, and stormwater BMPs on a fourteen point six six acre lot in the Aquifer Protection Overlay Zone two. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled, quote, "Site Plan for Two Proposed Buildings", end quote, on thirteen sheets dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and revised through March third, twenty twenty-five, prepared by Thomas Liston Associates Incorporated, fifty-one Main Street, Boylston, Mass. zero one five, zero five, stamped by Robert Nunnamacher, uh, PLS. The subject project is easterly off northeast cutoff and southwesterly off Holden Street, and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate zero seven, plot zero zero one, zero zero zero. A copy of the application plans and reports may be seen in the Office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal, Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website at HTTPS, colon, uh, forward slash, forward slash, shrewsbrymass.gov, forward slash, twelve zero two, forward slash, ongoing projects before Planning Board.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Patrick Haley. I'm a civil engineer in principle with Thompson Liston Associates in Boylston. We are representing one fifteen Northeast Cut Off Realty Trust. So we're looking at a site that's approximately fourteen acres on the west side of Holden Street, at the far end of town, budding Worcester on one side, and crossing into West Boylston. So this particular site has frontage on Northeast Cut Off in Worcester, as well as frontage on Holden Street in Shrewsbury. Thank you, that's helpful, yeah. So what's proposed on the site is, uh, two individual buildings. Uh, the larger of the two would be approximately fifty thousand square feet. That's, uh, designed as, as a warehouse with, uh, loading docks at the south end of the building, employee parking at the north end of the building with the small office component. So we see that bump out on the left side of the screen, that's where the office area would be. There'd be an accessible entrance from the parking in that area. And at the far right of the screen is where you'd see the loading docks. The entrance to this building is directly off Northeast Cut Off, uh, from Worcester into Shrewsbury. So in this particular location, we've designed a driveway to accommodate the truck traffic. Obviously, Northeast Cut Off is a wider, more heavily traveled street. Uh, Holden Street is a rather narrow street that doesn't have a really significantly improved pavement. So, uh, we also have a great difference between Northeast Cut Off and Worcester is low compared to Holden Street in Shrewsbury. So by keeping the driveway on the low side of the lot, crossing the existing wetland in that area, we're able to keep the dri- the building low and to, uh, more or less balance the site and not require a large import area. On the smaller buildings, about twelve thousand square feet, and that's proposed as a, a mixed-use or flex space building, which would have an office component typically, some garage space. Uh, we had a particular tenant in mind when we designed it that's no longer, you know, being marketed to that tenant. But this would allow for the possibility of driving your truck into the building, loading the truck, and then driving out the other end to go to a job site. So it could be a contractor that performs, you know, plumbing, heating, HVAC, or fiber optic cabling, or something like that, where they would wanna keep their raw goods indoors secured and be able to load the trucks in, in a controlled environment, rather than storing the, you know, equipment and goods out on, on the lot. So in that particular building, we have on the north side, the left side of the screen, room for approximately twelve, uh, trucks of a, a small nature. Could be vans, could be box trucks, something like that. And then on the, on the right side, uh, would be the employee parking. Uh, this particular, uh, property is located within the Aquifer Protection Overlay District, and for that reason, we're before you seeking a special permit. Uh, the impervious area from these two lots obviously exceeds fifteen percent, which is the maximum allowed by the bylaw. However, by collecting that runoff, treating it, and introducing it back into the ground su- through a system of infiltration, uh, chambers, we're able to reduce the effect of impervious area, such that it, uh, complies with the bylaw and exceeds the, the limit, or is less than the limit that's allowed by the bylaw. So we've provided some supplemental calculations with our application to describe how, how we comply, uh, with that aspect of the zoning bylaw. Uh, we're proposing to serve the two buildings, uh, with public water from the city of Worcester. That would come through that driveway crossing, uh, from Northeast Cut Off. That would go under a culvert, and there would be two separate services to these buildings to provide fire protection and domestic water services. Uh, we have designed the stormwater management system in accordance with the DEP's stormwater standards. Uh, we have not applied to the town yet for the stormwater permit, uh, but we have received approval from the Conservation Commission. So that has been reviewed and approved through both Worcester and Shrewsbury Conservation Commissions. Uh, so there's, other than the wetland crossing, where we're crossing a bank in order to put in that culvert to allow truck traffic, there's no wetland alteration. In fact, much of the buffer zone will remain in its vegetated state. So this development, as I said, would be for warehouse distribution use. It's, uh, compliant with the underlying zoning. Uh, it would provide benefits to the town in terms of employment and, uh, tax development, revenue enhancement. Uh, the traffic from this type of development is relatively low. Uh, with me is, uh, Mike Santos from VHB. He's in the process of conducting a traffic impact analysis, so he can, uh, give us an update on where we stand with that. As far as, uh, parking calculations, parking complies with the, uh, zoning bylaw. We do expect to provide electricity and, uh, telecommunications from the Shrewsbury side of the property. So on our plan, we're showing connections, uh, both from power to pad-mounted transformers and, uh, data connections, uh, from the Shrewsbury system. In this area, there is no public sewer available. Both of the lots would be served by individual Title V septic systems. Um, for solid waste, there's a dumpster proposed on the site, uh, at, on each lot. So on the, uh, the warehouse distribution center, we're not expecting a lot of waste there, because things come in, you know, get stored in racks and go back out on trucks. So the, the waste you would have might be from the office, the employee break room, and, you know, the restrooms. So there's a relatively small dumpster shown there on the right side, on the east side, southeast corner of the building. And then for the other use, there's a dumpster that's more remote from the building at the northeast corner of that lot. Uh, you might have some more waste there, as things are unpackaged, and you may in fact require a cardboard, uh, uh, compact, uh, compactor. But at this point, we're providing a place where that can be located, such that the trash truck can come in, make, make its, uh, you know, collection and run around the building and go back out onto Holden Street. I do have some, uh, architecture, architectural renderings, uh, some schematic idea of what the building would look like, so I can pass these around for you to look at. But, uh, this is a, 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 a look at the larger of the two buildings from the, the north side, uh, showing that, you know, it's, it's hard to make it not look like a box, but to the extent that they can, because it is that type of a building, there are some decorative elements proposed on the building, uh, such as some, uh, uh, block, uh, some metal panel construction, and some textured material that, uh, could be tile or composite material to provide some variation in the way the building looks, to make it attractive. Uh, the smaller building would have similar, you know, uh, design elements, although it hasn't been advanced to this level of design at this point in time. Uh, in looking at the site plan review criteria, uh, of course, the buildings would be constructed according to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Building Code and IBC requirements, including the, um, higher, uh, energy efficiency that's required. There's no activities here proposed that would generate emissions of odor, dust, or smoke. There's no noise activities other than the trucking operation. Um, no manufacturing- No manufacturing that would involve heat, glare, or vibration. We've prepared a lighting plan, although it's not in the package in front of you, it came in a little bit later than our filing, that will show that we're using Dark Skies compliant lighting with full cutoff, L E D lighting, no spillover onto the streets or budding properties. There's no outdoor storage of material proposed. Waste disposal, we talked about. We've been through the wetlands protection review and received approval from both Conservation Commissions. We are doing a fairly comprehensive landscaping plan to provide screening from the streets, as well as the interior parking plantings, to provide some shade and mitigation of the heat impacts from parking. When we look at our statement of impacts relative to the Aquifer Protection Overlay District, we have done some calculations now on our earth removal and grading that's required. As I said, we're trying to balance that large warehouse building such that there's not a lot of import required. Although we do have to import material for our stormwater system, our septic system, and our parking lot base that all told will be about twenty five hundred cubic yards. Then on the smaller of the two buildings, in this location, we're coming off Holden Street on the high end of the site. So we do have quite a bit of fill being imported in that area that amounts to about eighty five hundred cubic yards. So we've identified two potential sources for this fill to be imported to the site. One is nearby in West Boylston on Century Drive, which is less than a mile north of the site. Due to the high arsenic level in naturally occurring soil in this area, we have to test any soil that comes into the site to be sure that the arsenic level is at or below the levels that are present on the site. So we can't say definitively we're getting material from this site because it's got to be tested on a five hundred cubic yard basis in order to assure compliance with the, I guess it's the D E P regulators that would regulate that as far as not making the site, you know, any more contaminated than it is in its naturally occurring condition. We've also found that soils in this part of the area, town, or in Worcester and Shrewsbury have P fast in the soil, so that's another thing that's got to be tested. You can't import any material that has a higher level than is occurring there presently. The second source would be from the Worcester Sand and Gravel Site. They could provide screened material for fill. Both of those are options, but in both cases, they would have to be tested to assure compliance with the environmental laws. We don't propose any storage of hazardous materials either at above or below ground. There are no subsurface storage tanks proposed of any kind. We talked about the impervious areas. So I could just get a high level, the way we deal with the runoff from the parking lots is we collect it into catch basins with deep sumps and traps. We direct that through some pretreatment devices, such as hydrodynamic separators, and then that goes into some large underground precast concrete vaults or chamber systems, which are polyethylene chambers, and then those are backfilled with crushed stone to provide void space and bottom area where that runoff can be infiltrated into the ground. So the calculations that we've provided show that there's no increase in the peak rate of runoff from the development, nor is there any increase in the volume of runoff. In all of the storms we studied up to the one hundred year storm, in this case, that amounts to about eleven inches of rainfall in twenty four hours. So we are looking at higher rainfall amounts than we typically look at, partially because Worcester has adopted a higher rainfall standard than what the Atlas fourteen is showing us. So we're looking at the higher end of that confidence level for rainfalls. So I would say we're going above and beyond what the town requires in the way of pretreatment and infiltration of runoff. The next item on your criteria is the storage of deicing chemicals. We're not proposing any storage of deicing chemicals. What our property manager has found to be effective at this point is using liquid magnesium sulfate, say? Magnes- it's a liquid, applied magnesium based, not sodium based, deicing that's typically put down at the beginning of the storm. It makes it a little easier for them to remove the snow and not have it ice onto the parking lots. So that's stored in some tanks. If, you know, those are sealed tanks where, you know, they would put it into a device to spread it on the property. So those may or may not be on the premises, but it's not considered hazardous material. It would be, you know, separated from rainfall, so that there's no contamination of the runoff. There's no storage of commercial fertilizers proposed or animal manures. And as far as the construction schedule is proposed, we estimate this to take twelve to eighteen months, at least for the larger of the two buildings. We have contractors standing by until we get the permits in place and they're ready to start work. So this is not a pie in the sky project, this is a real project that's, you know, ready to break ground. I'd be happy to take, oh, well, actually, Mike, if you could give an update on the traffic before we take questions.
Thank you, sure, I'll be very brief here. Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. My name's Michael Santos. I'm a project manager and a senior traffic engineer with V H B. So I'm just gonna quickly go through the traffic analysis that we're currently working on. We're in the process of preparing a traffic study. We should have that submitted within a couple of weeks. The study's gonna be a full traffic impact and access study that'll look at existing traffic volumes in the area, safety evaluation. We're gonna review project generated impacts, look at future conditions, incorporate other area project traffic volumes. We'll look at site distance analysis, site access, and traffic operations analysis. So as you know, this is approximately sixty two thousand square foot warehouse facility that's in two buildings. The larger of the building has access on northeast cutoff. So most of the impacts from that building will be in Worcester. You know, if you're traveling to the interstate highways, one ninety and two ninety, they'll mostly be contained within Worcester. The trip generation for this, it's about thirty to thirty five trips per hour during the peak hours, about a hundred and forty trips per day. If you can compare that to the actual traffic volumes out there, which range between fourteen hundred to eighteen hundred vehicles on northeast cutoff, it's a very small number. So we don't expect any major traffic impacts from this project. We'll also provide an estimate of truck, truck trip generation. Again, that'll be pretty low as well, just due to the small, you know, it's a small warehousing facility. So again, there'll be more detailed information with the traffic study. You should see that within a, you know, about probably a couple of weeks or so.
Thank you, we'd be happy to take any questions.
One question, so the intention is to start to construct these simultaneously, is that correct?
No, the larger of the two buildings would be constructed first.
Okay. And is, I'm assuming it's because of topography on the site, but is, has there been any discussion or initial discussions with public safety about having full access around the fifty thousand square foot building? I noticed that, you know, it ends with a retaining wall, but it doesn't seem to have full access around.
We did receive a comment from the fire department where they're concerned with the length of the parking lot from the, just the dead end nature of the parking lot, where it exceeds the dimension that they'd like to see for fire apparatus. So we're looking at an option that would shorten that dead end section of parking lot, such that it's under the threshold that they're concerned about. The distance, what they mentioned was a hundred and fifty feet. So we're currently, you know, two parking spaces longer than that. It looks like we can arrange some, rearrange some parking to pull that back. They were also concerned with the turning radius into that auto parking area. So we'll be looking at realigning that driveway slightly to allow that truck maneuver.
Okay. Other members of the board?
Would a fire truck be able to get around the north side of the, of the fifty thousand square foot building?
Yeah, due to topography, I can't circumnavigate the building with fire, but I can get them to three sides, which is what the requirement is. So it will be fully, you know, fire sprinklered. So it's not, you know, the same as having a high occupancy building where you want access to all sides. This is a warehouse use.
And what's the anticipated height of the building?
That's a good question.
I think we tweaked the zone over on Worcester Sands, it could be seventy five feet. Max building height is fifty. Twenty a table, it says fifty.
It's on my table, thank you, that's what I was looking for, sir. It's proposed as fifty feet, here you go.
Other board members, questions, comments?
I just have a question, yeah.
Sure.
Since this area is within the Aquifer Overlay District, again, this is way down the road that you have to think of, but the chemicals you said you may use, deicing chemicals, I think make sure that they are not going to degrade any of the water quality, you know. Pay particular attention, and perhaps you should be talking to Mass D E P at some point down the road again, not at this stage.
So if I could, through the chair, we also permitted the site on the opposite side of northeast cutoff where the City of Worcester School Department has its buses parked. And we did work with Worcester D P W and the Water Department to find an acceptable material for deicing. The same material will be used here. We have the same concerns with the drinking water supply, both for the Town of Shrewsbury and the reserve supply for the City of Worcester. So they looked at those issues very carefully.
Yeah, okay, great. I mean, I'm glad you brought up the other side of the street, Worcester, you know. Since they have that existing buildings and all that, don't they have sewer line nearby? Right on the other side of the street?
Through the chair, there is a City of Worcester sewer that is directly in front of the site here. The problem is in this part of Worcester, there's a moratorium due to the restrictions with one of the pump stations. So, you know, we could wait that out, but from what I understand from the Worcester D P W engineers, there's a two year lead time on replacing the pumps in that pump station.
So the moratorium is from Worcester side, not so much Town of Shrewsbury, perhaps?
Correct, there's no Town of Shrewsbury sewer in this vicinity. So that's why we're looking at doing the septic systems. The soil conditions here are, you know, perfectly suitable to the septic systems. It's a gravel deposit essentially, which essentially is why it's characterized as an aquifer protection area, because it's, you know, highly permeable soil.
Yeah, yeah. My last one, this is pretty much true for most of the projects. Isn't there any criteria that is triggering ME P filing for this one at this stage? Whether it's the impervious surface or any event?
Through the chair, no, we don't require a state permit, so we're not subject to any of the ME P thresholds. And we're not subject to any of the sort of catchall provisions. So there is a catchall where you have a certain amount of impervious area plus, I think, fifteen hundred vehicles per day that would trigger a review of any enough. We don't fall into that category.
Thank you, thanks, Jim.
Other?
Yes, you said Conservation approved the project?
Yes, through the chair, we approved at the last hearing, we haven't received our order of conditions yet.
So is sheet C four in your plans erosion and sedimentation control, is that based on the order of conditions placed on it by Conservation? Or is there further plan for erosion control that would describe it more in more detail?
So there are perimeter erosion or sedimentation controls, and then there's also a construction period, operation, and maintenance plan that sort of explains how this would be carried out, and that's in our stormwater study, and that will be part of our stormwater permit from the town. As you know, they look at those things carefully for the construction period erosion and sediment control.
This will be a D E P site too, right?
What do you mean by a D E P site?
Meaning you're bordering the wetlands. You're probably in the buffer zone here to Port Farm Brook. Will it require D E P?
Through the chair, it's subject to the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act and the Conservation Commissions in both communities administrate that. So there's no direct D E P permit required.
Okay. My overall concern would be protection of the water supply for the Town of Shrewsbury, really, being concerned. So the discharge from the stormwater eventually makes its way to Port Farm Brook on the westerly side of this tract. So that's really my only concern, and I know what you mentioned about proposed uses of the two buildings and so on and so forth, but until there's a tenant, that's kind of a, more or less a, just a projection or a hope at this point, isn't it?
I think our clients are, you know, well versed in the real estate market, and they've been very successful with their build to suit projects and other places.
Oh, I don't doubt that, I'm just saying, if, there's no proposed at this time, but there may be, depending on a tenant, there may be something, one of those buildings that, in the future, that we're not, you know, that's not on the table right now, is that fair to say or no?
If there are any uses that we're saying are excluded at this point, we would have to come back to you to amend the special permit to accommodate.
Fair enough, okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the board? Chris, are there any comments from the town?
No, we will be providing a comment letter similarly. I know there's some additional studies outstanding that are being prepared, so we're happy to provide those prior to the next meeting and work those, any comments with the applicant at that time as well.
At this point, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this, this evening? Oh, yes, Mr. Bray.
Hi there, good evening. Krista Dupre, fourteen Candlewood Way. Just a few questions, I've been loosely following this project for a bit. Definitely saw the work that was put in definitely over conservation, since I know that is a very wetland area, since there is runoff that comes directly from the high side across Holden Street on heavy rainy days, all the way into that area. And it has been known to flood. My quick question, I guess, since it sounds like traffic study is due, is most of the traffic you said is going to be exiting onto the Worcester side?
Yeah, so the, the large-
Through the chair? Sorry.
Should I answer?
Yes.
Yeah, so the larger building has direct access to northeast cutoff, so that will be generating more traffic than the smaller building. So as traffic disperses, you know, if it's headed to one ninety or to two ninety, there will be some impacts, the Shrewsbury intersections, but I think most of the impacts will be within Worcester.
And are they anticipating any type of additional signaling? And I was curious, I know it was mentioned that the buses for the City of Worcester are, I'd say loosely across the street, I couldn't say exactly where based upon this plan, but I was trying to get a better idea, because I do think of the congestion, the time of day. Curious on hours of operations. Type, I, box trucks were mentioned, but being a warehouse, I believe they can operate twenty four hours a day. Through the chair.
At this point in time, we don't have any projected hours of operation, and, you know, I think the commenter is correct, that if it's a warehouse use, it could be at any time of day.
That, some of that analysis, I would assume, is going to be picked up as part of the traffic, the traffic study in terms of looking at the existing conditions of, of bus traffic in the area, et cetera.
Yeah, so the traffic study will include traffic counts, twenty four hour, and we might do a forty eight hour traffic count on Holden Street and on northeast cutoff. So we'll have daily traffic patterns. It's usually typically broken down by type of vehicle, so I don't know if it's just buses, but it will show heavy vehicles, passenger vehicles. All of that will be included in the traffic study.
And just for clarification, that is the true exit on, on to the Worcester side. So the exit of the trucks would not be on the Holden Street side? I'm just looking for clarification on that, knowing the difference in the types of roads they are. One is definitely a rural road, I don't believe there is even a yellow stripe down the middle, for example. I didn't know if that is an emergency exit on the other side, um, for trucks to come in, come in a backway, emergency, just curious for traffic flow.
Okay, through the chair, we did mention that the larger building is exclusively accessing northeast cutoff. We do have a grade difference between that building and Holden Street, where the building will sit quite a bit lower. Um, if we can look at the grading plan, we can see, you know, what the slopes look like there. So if you look on, on that sheet there, where it says Holden Street at the north, at the top right of the sheet there, you can see that there's a, a number of lines there, it's the topography coming down. And then we're developing a swale there between Holden Street and the building. Where where that water comes off that hill, there's a number of culverts that come across Holden Street. So we're sort of directing that existing runoff into the swale that goes around our development site. So that precludes any kind of truck access onto Holden Street from the larger of the two buildings. Uh, as I explained, the smaller, the twelve thousand square foot building is geared to a different use. It's not, you know, a large truck warehouse type use, it's more of a contractor, uh, use. Uh, there is a place in the market that, you know, there's a demand for this type of space in the market, and our clients are testing the waters on that to see which tenant they can attract to this. But I don't expect large trailer trucks or box trucks, you know, maybe an occasional box truck with deliveries, but, you know, not a constant flow of trucks as you would have in the case of a distribution center.
Um, and I, I guess two more, uh, quick questions, in regards to the septic. Definitely concerns, because my understanding is there will be a large sewer project that will be done. Would there be potential to eventually tie into that in the future? I understand this is septic, but I understand there's no water line down Holden, is what it sounds like so far. Um, but to potentially tie into that in the future, since my understanding, we're trying to get away from subdeck here in town.
So I can confirm that with engineering, but I don't believe sewer is extending, um, this far as part, part of that project. And, um, and I, I'm not sure in terms of the moratorium, uh, again, we can only connect and not extend, so, um, I don't believe that this would, um, be able to connect, but I will confirm that with engineering.
Okay. And my last quick question would be, is my understanding, this i- is the entire thing in Shrewsbury? Or there's a small section in Worcester and possibly another town?
Through the chair, the site is in all three communities. The majority of it is in Shrewsbury, there's about a six-foot strip on the west side that's in Worcester, which gives it frontage on northeast cutoff. Then if we look at the property, it kind of goes up into a point, and that point where it becomes, where Holden Street turns into Mountain Street, there's a little triangle of land that's in West Boylston. No construction is proposed in West Boylston. The only work proposed in Worcester is the construction of that driveway and the wetland crossing, which at this point has been permitted through the Conservation Commission in Worcester. And, um, the water line is the subject of an intermunicipal agreement memorandum between the, uh, Town of Shrewsbury and the Worcester Department of Public Works, that has been signed at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item this evening? All right, it sounds like we still are, do a couple of items, um, to, to review on this. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this hearing till the next.
I guess the question's gonna be, seems pretty straightforward, but if we don't have the traffic study, you know, our agenda's kind of full. Do you anticipate turning around, Mr. Santos, do you anticipate turning around the traffic study in the next two weeks?
Yeah, that's, that's the plan. We're, we're, we're in the process of pulling it together and-
So we have an opportunity to take a look at it, even though most of the traffic looks like it's dumping into Worcester. We still gotta look at it, we gotta-
Yeah.
The two weeks?
That, that's, we'll, we'll have it done.
Okay, that'd be great, that just gives us a little bit of time to be able to review it, so, yes.
We were hoping to have that before this hearing, and, you know, there's a lot of projects going on in the area. It was difficult to schedule the traffic counts within our-
We'll be serving breakfast the next-
Before here, a little later. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to continue this hearing to then May first?
I move that we continue the, uh, site plan approval and special permit for the, uh, property at three sixty-nine dash three seventy-seven Holden Street until Thursday, May first at seven P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next proposed multi-family development site plan approval and special permit for thirty-three sixty-nine Green Street.
This-
Yep.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, April third, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M in the Select Board Meeting Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Polte Homes of New England LLC, nineteen hundred West Park Drive, Suite one eight zero, Westboro, Mass. zero one five eight one, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section ten, uh, TOD overlay district, and section seven F site plan, a site plan approval by the planning board to allow for a hundred and fifty unit residential community. The project includes one hundred twelve townhomes and thirty-eight multifamily low-rise garden units in one structure. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled, quote, "Site Plan for Emerald Run," one sixty, on sixty-five sheets, dated March fourth, twenty twenty-five, prepared by Civil Design Group LLC, Four High Street, Suite one fifty-five, North Andover, Mass. zero one eight four five, stamped by Matthew Leidner, P E. The subject project is southerly of Hartford Turnpike and easterly of Green Street and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate forty-three, plot zero zero seven, zero zero zero. A copy of the application, plans, and reports may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the planning board website at H T T P S colon four slash four slash Shrewsbury, Mass. dot gov, four slash twelve zero two, four slash ongoing projects before planning board.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you, thank you all. Chris, were, are you able to, to flip through the slides?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Good evening, board members, members of the public. Um, I know it's late in the night, um, but we do have a presentation we've prepared for you. Uh, we'll try to be efficient, uh, and, and also thorough and, and organized for you as well. As a way of introduction, uh, my name is Mark Mastriani. I'm here representing Polte Homes of New England, who is the owner and, um, applicant of our proposed residential project uh, that we're calling Emerald Run. Uh, we've submitted, and as you, as, as you mentioned and read it, read into the record, we've submitted an application for site plan approval under the town's Transit Orientated Development District. The TOD recently adjusted, uh, to encompass our project site, uh, to comply, for the town to comply with the state's M B A Community Zoning Act. Uh, I'm also here with Matthew Leidner of Civil Design Group. Uh, Matt is doing our civil engineering and also helping us, uh, through the permitting process. Uh, next slide, please. I just thought I'd take a moment, um, to introduce, uh, Polte Homes of New England. So I'm here representing Polte Homes of New England. Polte, uh, Homes of New England is a local division of the Polte Group. Uh, Polte Group is a large, uh, national home builder, publicly traded on the New York Stock Exchange. Uh, I only mention Polte Group, uh, because, uh, it allows Polte Homes of New England, our local division, to be self-funded. We don't rely on any financing, um, we don't rely on any lenders, so, um, it allows us, uh, financial strength to start and complete, and, and, uh, complete all the projects that we start. Uh, and it also allows us to have an amazing library of, of product to be able to offer and to be able to bring to market. Uh, Polte continually updates our, our homes that we provide based on customer feedback, based on latest trends of, of what customers, uh, want to see in the homes, and, and, and Polte Group provides that for us. But I'd rather actually focus on, uh, Polte Homes of New England. If you could go to the next slide. So Polte Homes of New England, so our office is right down the street in Westboro, uh, we've been there for about thirty years. Um, and we've been constructing homes, uh, all around Shrewsbury. We actually haven't had an opportunity to work in Shrewsbury yet, we're really excited to, but we've been, uh, working all around Eastern Mass. and around, uh, the Central Mass. area for thirty years. And at this point, we've, um, built and constructed successfully about nine thousand homes, uh, in, in Massachusetts. Um, all for sale homeownership, home, homeownership homes. Uh, we don't build any apartment communities or rental communities. We're really proud of our reputation, it's Massachusetts is a really small area. People move, uh, back and forth, uh, from communities, so we see the same people over and over again. And also what happens is when we come into a town like Shrewsbury, the first thing you all do is you call your counterparts in, in the, in the various towns that we've worked in, and, and we're really, uh, proud of our reputation. And we would encourage all of you to call other towns that we've worked in or see the, the product that we've provided in other towns. And, uh, we're really proud of what, what we've built and been able to accomplish. A couple local, um, communities that we have active right now, uh, that are shown on the map is in Upton. We just completed a hundred and thirty-nine attached townhome community, uh, right, right next door in Upton called Upton Ridge. Um, also Chauncey Lake is a, an active community that we're a little over half, uh, built out, uh, right in Westboro over next to, um, Chauncey Lake on Lyman Street. And that, and then in Grafton, we have two active projects, we have a single-family home project there, as well as a, uh, a residential condominium project consisting of low-rise and, and some townhomes. Uh, and that's active, and that's very, very close actually to the, to the site in Shrewsbury that we're, we're here tonight to talk about. Uh, next slide. Just quickly, the team that we've put together to help us with the design and the approvals, uh, so we have Civil Design Group, Matt Leidner, uh, and then also, um, Bob Micho of M V M., who you're all familiar with, who is here tonight. Uh, he has provided a traffic impact study, it has been submitted as part of our application, uh, and it's being peer reviewed by Bowman, uh, as we speak. So I would imagine that peer review will be ready, um, um, prior to the next meeting. Uh, we've engaged V H B. to help us, uh, with the wetlands, uh, the resource areas on the site, and our, and our, um, Conservation Commission permitting, we have submitted, uh, to the Conservation Commission for, um, an, an N O I. For an order, order of conditions, and we're having our first meeting with them next week or so.
Correct.
Middle of April.
Yes.
And also, uh, Dan Cofflin of Cofflin Environmental, he's our utility consultant engineer who helps us with sewer and water, um, uh, design of our, of our, of our project. So just, um, site location for all, for anybody not familiar with the site. Um, the site is located at thirty-three to sixty-nine Green Street. Uh, the site is approximately forty acres, uh, in size. Uh, it's located, uh, in the southeast corner of Shrewsbury, near the Grafton and Westboro, uh, town line. It's, um, located to the east of Route twenty, and then-
Sorry, could you say that again?
I'll try. Um, it's located to the east of Route twenty and in between Green Street, it had fronts on Green Street, uh, and South Street. And then there's a sig- there's an unsignalized intersection on Route twenty, South Street and Route twenty, right turn only. Uh, and then there's a, uh, signalized intersection, uh, Green Street to Route twenty, um, uh, adjacent to our site. Uh, next slide. Just a few basic highlights that I wanted to touch upon, and then I'll turn the presentation over to Matt, who will go into more detail, uh, on the site. So, um, this is the same site of our, um, existing, uh, comprehensive permit that Polte went through with the Z B A. over the last year. And right before we, um, went to construction, the town, uh, started to engage, um, the, the zoning of the, of the, of modifying the TOD, um, to encompass our site. So we kind of put the pause on, on our project, and we wanted to wait to see the outcome of, of the TOD, TOD, TOD zoning. Um, the, the TOD zoning was approved to encompass the site, uh, and we were really excited to utilize that zoning, and we thought that we could, um, revamp our project, Emerald Run, to really meet the, the desires of the town and meet the, the intentions of that TOD, TOD zoning. Um, so we're here tonight, uh, presenting, uh, a new Emerald Run, uh, um, and we're requesting site plan approval, a byright site plan, plan approval under that TOD zoning. Uh, we do have, uh, two special height requests within the application. Um, one for a, uh, half a story increase for the thirty-eight unit low-rise building, uh, a half a story increase and, um, an extra five feet. Both of those criteria allowances were sort of contemplated in the TODs, TOD zoning, uh, subject to the board's discretion. So Matt will go into more detail why we're excited to present, um, those special permit requests and why we thought it was appropriate, um, for this, for this project. Of importance, you'll see, um, bisecting the, the property is a, is a parcel of land that we are intending to carve off and donate to the town, uh, as a public benefit. So, uh, when we went through the forty B. process with the Z B A. and with the town, uh, it was, um, very important to the town for that, to acquire that piece in order to, uh, design, permit, and construct, potentially construct a connector roadway from South Street to Green Street. Um, I guess it's been an initiative of the town for a long time. It'll, it'll, uh, increase safety, uh, onto Route twenty, because right now there's, the South Street to the Route twenty intersection is dangerous and, um, and is unsignalized, and it's a right turn only, but people take lefts. So the town will, will, we will donate this, this parcel to the town, which will allow people on South Street to access Green Street, to get to the signalized intersection that, uh, has plenty of capacity, um, to handle the, the traffic. And that was a commitment we made during the previous project, and we are more, uh, we are definitely, uh, still committed to providing that as part of this project. So again, a total of one hundred and fifty units. Uh, thirty-eight units are in the low, low-rise garden building, uh, closest to Route twenty. Uh, that's, and then there's one hundred and twelve townhomes. One hu- one hundred and three of the townhomes access, uh, Green Street. And then, uh, nine of the townhomes will access, uh, South Street. There's, we're providing fifteen percent affordable homes as part of the project, which is a total of twenty-three of the units. They'll be dispersed evenly throughout the project in accordance with the E O H L C, uh, regulations. Uh, there's a mix of one and two bedrooms in the, uh, low-rise building, and then, um, three-bedroom, uh, townhomes, the townhomes are three bedrooms. Uh, and again, as I mentioned earlier, uh, these will all be for sale homeownership homes, and it will be developed under a condominium, um, structure, privately condominium, privately owned and maintained by the, by the residents there. Um, and then one other commitment we made during the previous, um, proposal, uh, was that all of our homes will be all electric. So there is natural gas on Green Street, uh, we don't intend to use it for the homes, and we intend to, uh, continue our commitment to build fossil fuel homes and all, all electric homes, uh, as part of this proposal. Uh, so with that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Matt, and he can go through some more of the, the highlights.
Before you start? Briefly before that, um, it is ten twenty-nine, uh, we do need to take a vote to extend the meeting past ten thirty.
Okay, sorry, procedural.
Oh, that's okay. Please vote.
So can I get a motion to extend-
So can I get a motion to extend this meeting past ten thirty?
I move that we extend, uh, our public hearings, uh, this evening beyond ten thirty.
Give her a second.
Second.
On favor.
All right.
And before I turn it over to Matt, the next slide, uh, we did, uh, we did, um, provide a, in, a building design, uh, floor plan architectural renderings as part of our package. Uh, and as part of this slideshow, there are some sample, um, townhome building designs. And then on the next slide, there's a, uh, perspective rendering of the proposed thirty-eight unit low-rise building. Um, and again, the, the architectural package has been submitted to the board, uh, as part of our application.
Good evening, board members. Uh, Matthew Leidner with Civil Design Group. Um, I'll give an overview of the engineering aspects of the plan. Um, I think the good news is Mark took some of my talking points, so I think-
I tried not to.
I can condense a little bit here, uh, particularly given the time. Of course, happy to go into further detail on anything, uh, you know, throughout the presentation if you'd like or, uh, during question and answer session. Um, but if you could please advance to the next slide. Uh, just quickly, this is a snapshot of the existing site. This is the existing condition survey. Uh, we're rotated here, so Route twenty is actually on the left side. So north is, um, pretty much pointing to the left on this plan. Green Street is on the bottom of the page and South Street is up at the top of the page. Uh, so the site does lie within three zoning districts. Um, on the left side, closest to Route twenty is limited industrial. And then, uh, up at the top along south, but farther back from, uh, Route twenty is Rural A. And then toward the bottom and back from Route twenty along Green Street, uh, is Rural B District. Uh, so those are the underlying zoning districts on the site. Um, there's a lot of topography on this site. It generally slopes from the perimeter to the interior of the site. Um, there's a wetland complex that bisects the site and flows from north to south. Um, and then on the western, uh, part of that, so down toward Green Street, there's, there's another wetland that, that bisects that portion. So, um, it kind of carves the site into three upland areas, uh, that kind of set the stage for, for the development and, uh, development envelope for the project. The wetlands on the Green Street side, uh, were delineated and, um, accepted by the Conservation Commission, uh, through an Order of Resource Area delineation, ORAD, uh, back at the time of the comprehensive permit project, when that was approved. The wetlands on the South Street side, so up at the top, those were more recently delineated and those are before the Conservation Commission now to formalize that line. But I can tell you that, uh, that process is coming to an end. They had the line peer reviewed and there was only one flag that had to move five feet, uh, landward, so, you know, up slope. Um, and it has almost no impact on the, the project. We just need to adjust one deck on a townhome just to stay fi- by five feet, just to stay out of the, um, the structure setback. So no significant impacts based on that process, uh, process. But we are still awaiting, uh, an ORAD for that wetland line. Uh, if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is the overall site plan. Uh, we saw the rendered version when Mark was talking. Uh, this is the plan out of the, the submitted plan set. Uh, so just quickly, starting from Route twenty, uh, on the left and working our way, uh, southward to the right. Um, the, so in the bottom left, you see, uh, the, the larger building. That's the thirty-eight unit multifamily building that's proposed. Um, the access proposed is a full access driveway on Green Street at the bottom. Um, that's the building that is the subject of the special permit request. Uh, that is before you. And so, um, the TOD zoning allows for, uh, the building height maximum two and a half stories, thirty-five feet. And the TOD zoning gives the planning board the discretion to, uh, approve up to an additional story of height and an additional ten feet of height via a special permit. So, um, the special permit we're requesting for that one building, uh, is to, to, we're asking for basically half of that, that additional, uh, allowance via special permit. So we're asking for an additional five feet and an additional half a story. That building is proposed, uh, it's a three-story building as opposed to two and a half. And then it's forty, uh, feet. It's just under forty feet, actually. Um, we're thirty-five is the max. So we're asking for five feet of relief and a half a story of relief. And only for that one building.
Um, that's going to be homeownership too?
That will also be homeownership. Uh, that's a mixture of one and two-bedroom homeownership condominium units, correct? Um, we feel that that building, uh, in that location, it provides a more diverse housing mix, product mix, um, to offer. There's some benefits in terms of the construction sequencing, um, by building that building, uh, there as well. Um, we intentionally located it in the portion of the site that is, uh, zone, underlying zoned, uh, limited industrial. Um, and I will note too, that the limited industrial district, um, so the underlying zoning does allow a height of four stories and, and fifty feet. So we're, we're lower than what the underlying zoning would allow, uh, by right, uh, in that, uh, limited industrial district.
That looks similar to the building design for Emerald Run one.
It's, it's, uh, similar, but it's one, those were four-story buildings. This is a three-story version of that. So it's, it's, it, the appearance is similar, but it's a, it's a, not as tall as those buildings.
I don't mean to interrupt you. I just-
No, please, please do that. I, I appreciate that. No, absolutely. Feel free. Um, it also adds, um, additional, because there can be more units condensed in that area as opposed to if that were also townhomes, um, that also, um, adds more affordable units to the project by having that building as opposed to townhomes, uh, in that area. So moving from that building, again, Green Street's on the bottom. So moving along Green Street, there's a, um, a triplex building, right, yeah, right there. Um, so now we're into the Rural B District. That is proposed to be accessed via a common driveway on Green Street. Farther to the right, uh, is the largest, uh, cluster of townhomes. So that's a hundred townhome units in that area there. The proposed access is, uh, a full access rate where the cursor is on Green Street. And then due to the length of the road, um, we've looped it through. And this is similar to the proposal for the comprehensive permit, which had a similar roadway length. We've looped it through and provided a gated emergency-only access, um, the farthest driveway on the right on Green Street, right there. So that would be gated and only for emergency access purposes. Um, and then moving up to the top along South Street, we have the, the final cluster. That is nine townhomes. Those are in the Rural A District. And, um, those would be accessed via a common driveway on South Street. Uh, the townhomes, all the townhomes there will each have, uh, a two-car garage as well as two driveway parking spaces. Um, and then the multifamily building, the six, the, um, the thirty-eight unit building will have sixty-eight surface, uh, parking spaces, of which twelve will be EV, will have EV outlets for EV charging. Uh, if you could please advance the next plan. Thank you. Um, so, a total, in the proposed condition, eighty percent, actually slightly over eighty percent of the site will be, um, green space. Either undisturbed or disturbed but landscaped, uh, space. We submitted a landscaping, uh, plan set as part of the, the plans that were submitted for the site plan approval and special permit. This is the, the overall landscaping plan that was part of that set. Um, robust landscaping program, uh, just a quick mention here. All native cultivars that are adapted to the climate in Massachusetts. Um, the species were selected to withstand periods of drought. Um, and they are consistent with the, uh, Shrewsbury planting, uh, guidelines. We went through that with the previous project, comprehensive permit projects. We're familiar with those guidelines and this plan, uh, does comply with those. Uh, next slide, please. Just to, um, briefly touch on utilities. So the, the plan for water is municipal water, uh, to be fed from the main in Green Street. Uh, that would feed the thirty-eight unit building, the three, uh, the triplex on Green Street and then the one hundred unit cluster. And then water, municipal water, which is also in South Street, would feed the nine, uh, townhomes up on South Street. Um, the, the water main in Green Street is currently a six-inch, uh, main. It's undersized for, for this project. So, uh, there is a, um, a separate off-site project that is, uh, in permitting now actually to upsize the water main up to a twelve-inch main in Green Street, uh, from Route twenty all the way through the, the project frontage. Um, that was part, also, that same off-site work was part of the, um, I shouldn't say part of, but was also associated with the, the comprehensive permit project. Uh, so the work, uh, will be the same. We did adjust some of the stub locations into the project because just they changed a little bit on this versus the comprehensive permit plan. But the, the, the water main work in Green Street is, is the same as it, it was with that, uh, comprehensive permit project. So we've extensively coordinated that work, uh, with DPW. And, uh, it's actually a municipal project, so they're in the process of, uh, wrapping up the final permitting for that, uh, which I, I think is almost, they're almost to the point of having those permits and that work is actually almost ready to, uh, to commence. Um, as far as wastewater, so the plan is to connect to the municipal wastewater system. Um, onsite, the sewer will consist of, some areas will be gravity sewer, uh, serviced by gravity sewer. Um, other areas will be pumped. It will all, even the gravity, um, will, it will all end up going to two pump stations. One near the thirty-eight unit building and then one up in the hundred unit cluster area. Um, and the sewer will then be pumped via a common force main in Green Street that will ultimately tie into the municipal system, uh, where it exists in, uh, Route twenty. And similar to the water work, um, off-site on Green Street, the sewer work, uh, has also been extensively coordinated with DPW. Um, and my understanding is there, the final permits for that are, are pending and that work is, um, soon, soon to be able to kick off as well. Uh, as far as stormwater goes, uh, we have a comprehensive stormwater management program, uh, proposed. It includes treatment measures, uh, which include bio-retention and infiltration, um, scattered throughout the site uh, and other mitigation measures, uh, detention. Some of those have a detention function. Uh, the combination of all those, uh, functions which, uh, mitigates the, the runoff, uh, to the, to the property line. Uh, the stormwater system has been designed to comply with both the state standard, DEP standards, as well as the local, uh, Shrewsbury Stormwater, uh, Bylaw, uh, Regulations, actually. Um, the design for stormwater does incorporate, uh, sustainable elements and, and LID, Low Impact Development, uh, Elements. Um, for starters, we're, the project is well below the maximum allowable density. Um, so the zoning, the TOD zoning allows up to fifteen units per acre. As it stands here, we're only at three-point-seven units per acre. So we're well under the allowable density. Um, we've obviously clustered the units. It's a very clustered type of development. Um, that helps preserve open space. So, uh, I had mentioned earlier, more than eighty percent will be green space. But, um, if we just carve off and, and, and look at what's to be undisturbed, um, it's almost half the site, um, will, will remain undisturbed, uh, in this, in this development, uh, or on this site. Um, the design has been, um, uh, worked out such that it, um, harmonizes with the existing terrain. I think I mentioned earlier, there is a lot of grade change on the site. Um, so the design of the roadways is very deliberate to be able to work with that grade change. And then also the units themselves, uh, some units are in-ground, some have a walkout condition in the back. And it was all very carefully chosen to be able to harmonize and work with the topography, uh, to the extent that we could. Uh, we've made efforts to reduce impervious surfaces associated with the project. Um, so for example, all the driveways associated with the townhomes are, are short. They're all between about twenty-two feet and twenty-eight feet in length, um, which is not a long driveway. It's enough to fit the vehicle comfortably, but it's not excessive by any means. Um, the sidewalk throughout the development's only proposed on one side of the street as opposed to both sides. Um, it saves impervious area and we felt it's just unnecessary to have it on both sides. Um, and so, uh, the, the lot, so the density is, is well below the allowable. Also, the lot coverage, um, is allowed to be up to seventy-five percent. We're only at nine percent lot coverage with this development. So we're well under that as, as well. Um, we do use bio-retention, um, in some areas in this design. That's a low-impact development technique. Um, and then the landscape specifically being selected to withstand, um, periods of low rainfall. Um, I will mention the stormwater was peer reviewed by Graves Engineering. Um, we did receive their peer review letter, uh, in the past few days. Um, and they had no stormwater comment at all. Um, so I attribute that to the fact that they peer reviewed the comprehensive permit design and they had some comments on that. So we kind of proactively addressed those with this design and as a result, there were no stormwater comments. So just, um, some other, just a few other items to touch on here and then I'll, I'll wrap it up. Uh, we did, I think Mark mentioned, we did submit, um, to the Conservation Commission. So I, I mentioned that there's a pending ORAD for the wetland line on South Street. Um, but then we've also submitted this project to them for, um, an order of conditions. So we submitted a notice of intent to them with the same plan set that's, that's before you. Uh, the hearing scheduled, the first hearing with them is scheduled for April fifteenth. And, um, there are some wetland impacts associated with this project. Um, they are identical to those that were associated with the comprehensive permit, uh, project, except that this project does also have, um, a temporary wetland impact associated with s- getting sewer to the nine townhomes on South Street. That was not part of the comprehensive, um, permit. So that is one difference. However, we're proposing to restore that area in kind. Um, so the permanent wetland impacts, um, which there are some, um, are the same as the comprehensive permit project. One difference though on this is that whereas the comprehensive permit project was only subject to the State Wetland Protection Act and not the local bylaw, this is subject also to the local bylaw. And the, the local bylaw is more stringent when it comes to mitigation measures associated with wetland disturbance. So while the wetland, the, the permanent disturbance is the same on this project as the other, the mitigation is much more on this project than was on the other. So, uh, we haven't been before them yet, but, um, we're, you know, we're, we're thinking, uh, initially that it, it should be a fairly positive discussion with, with the conservation because the, the impacts are essentially the same, but the, the, um, the mitigation is, is, is much more robust on this plan. Um, the Graves peer review, I mentioned there were no stormwater comments. They also did look at, um, site plan review requirements, um, just, and just sort of general engineering practice, uh, type items. And they did have a handful of comments, uh, in their letter. And, um, they're all very easy, easily addressed. Uh, there's nothing that will have any significant impact on the plan. Um, we do plan to address everything, all comments that we receive in writing. We just wanted to get all the comments first, present to you, get feedback before we go ahead and, and, you know, start addressing comments. So, um, but that is the plan, is that we will address all these comments, uh, that we receive in, in writing. We also did receive, uh, comments from the fire department, uh, which we will work with them, uh, to address. The plan does meet fire access code, uh, requirements. Um, so their comments, I would say, were more clarifications and, and requesting, um, you know, information on lengths of, of some of the roadways and, and turnarounds, things like that. Um, and we'll be able to provide them with the information to show that it does meet the fire access code, uh, sufficiently. So at this point, we don't anticipate there'll be- So at this point, we don't anticipate there'll be any changes of any significance related to those comments. But we will work through those with the fire department. Building inspector also submitted a handful of comments. They were also, I would categorize them as, as very minor, very easy to address, not requiring any, any planned changes of any significance. And then lastly, MDM, who's the traffic engineer for Pulte, did prepare a traffic impact and access study that was submitted with the site plan and special permit application. My understanding is that Bowman is peer reviewing that, but we don't yet have that peer review in hand. What I guess at this point, all I can really say is MDM was the traffic engineer on the comprehensive permit project. Bowman was the peer reviewer. That proj- project got approved, obviously, and this project has, has less impacts traffic-wise than that project had. So, you know, we're not expecting any, any major comments to come out of that peer review, but certainly when we get the comments, we'll, we will review them and, and address them accordingly. So with that, I guess I'll, I'll turn it back over. Thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
So one of my first questions, can you, you may have touched on this, but can you confirm the breakdown of where and, where the affordables are and what the breakdown in terms of one, twos, and threes bedrooms?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take a stab at that. So we have not submitted the locations of the affordable homes throughout the community, but in accordance with EOHLC guidelines, you have to provide a proportionate number of affordable homes and market rate homes for the number of bedrooms. So, so it, for instance, we have twenty-one bedrooms total in the project. So fifteen percent of the one-bedrooms would, would need to be affordables. And then there's eighteen two-bedrooms, so fifteen percent of the eighteen two-bedrooms would need to be affordable. And then there's one hundred and twelve three-bedrooms and fifteen percent of the one hundred and twelve would need to be affordable. So that's, that's our intention is to, is to provide a proportionate.
It's not fifteen percent cumulative, it's fifteen percent of each type of.
Fifteen percent of each type of the bedroom styles of units.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other members of the board, any questions?
You know, you think that we could get a, a set of plans for the forty-B that you did? Just so I can take a look at it and compare it? Because I know you guys referred to it in the context of your presentation, but I never really saw it.
Sure.
Absolutely.
So how, how best would we transmit that, Chris? I know you probably have them.
We can pull the final plan set from the zoning board of appeals process.
If it's easy for you to do that, that's fine. If not, I, clearly, we have it and we can, however is best.
Yeah, if you need more copy, just, we're happy to submit whatever you need.
It was a lip, right?
It was.
Yeah.
Yes, it was a lip, yes.
Just, if you just could summarize, I know there was a lot of, a lot of concern with the, with the butters on Appaloosa Drive. Going through the process on the last rendition of this project, what can you say to those butters now with the, with this change? Is this, are they, are they better off because of the, of the lower height here? How would you summarize it to them?
You know, I would summarize it that I think, you know, first of all, I think the, the previous project, I don't want to discredit because we spent, you know, a year working with all of the, with the town and with the town departments and also with the neighborhood who came out to many of the meetings. And we arrived at a design that mitigated to the best of our ability the impacts of the larger buildings in the single-family neighborhood. So I don't want to discredit that, that project because that's important. But I do think, I do think that this community being proposed now is more harmonious with the neighborhood than, than the previous one. So, you know, as Matt mentioned, you know, there's, there's half of the density, so one hundred and fifty units versus three hundred. So the traffic impacts will be significantly less on Green Street. And that was one of the major concerns that they had expressed during, during the process. The other obvious major concern that the neighborhood expressed was the view from their homes to, to our proposed homes and we spent a great deal of time preparing, preparing sections and elevations on what it would look like in different times of the year. And, you know, the way we've designed this community is that we put the thirty-eight unit low-rise building closest to Route twenty where we thought it was most appropriate with the existing uses along Route twenty. And then we located the townhomes adjacent to the single-family homes and those, you know, will have a lot less impact visually on, on the adjacent neighborhood. So that's visual impacts, traffic impacts. I think I could probably go on about, I mean, almost every aspect of this project versus the previous one sort of reduces the, the impacts to the, to the neighborhood.
Other members of the board?
Not, uh, there, just one question. Not knowing about the previous project, did the previous project also had that connecting road in there?
Yeah, so I just want to be clear, so the connecting road is not part of the previous project or our project.
Oh, okay.
What we are doing is we've committed to donate the strip of land to the town. And the town, I believe, has, has a grant from the state, some funding from the state in order to design the road and get it permitted and then ultimately construct it. And it's a town, it's, it's a separate town initiative and is, is not connected to our project in any way. But, but the strip of land is really important. I think is a really port, important piece that the town is really looking forward to and we're committed to, to providing that.
If I could add one thing to that, we've, we've designed the project, you know, take specifically the thirty-eight unit building area and then the, that triplex building so that, so that it will, will blend in with the road. It will work engineering-wise, grading-wise with the road should the road be built at some point in the future. So there, there won't be a conflict there if that road gets built or when that road gets built. We took that into account when we designed those two areas.
And we also designed our project so it can stand independently. If that road never gets built, you know, that doesn't impact our, our community at all either.
Thank.
Anyone else? Chris, comments on, from the?
So similarly, we'll be drafting a comment letter. I won't blabber it, given the hour, so.
How do you think it makes sense for them to make the presentation, you know? You see, we have a busy agenda. I, I foresee having a busy agenda for the next three months if we could segment it. You know, you make your engineering, stormwater pitch, maybe the next meeting. Traffic, the second meeting, the, the third, would be the third meeting and, you know, odds and a, landscape and odds and ends, the next one. I don't know, you, you can work that out with Chris.
Yeah, we, well, we'd certainly like to, to be on your next meeting and, and we think, I mean, we've already received the Graves peer review on stormwater and we think we'll be well, well along with the, getting the Bowman peer review on the traffic and be able to respond and, at the next meeting. And, and also if we get the staff meeting, we'll be able to respond, so.
No, I'm not looking to make this my life's work, I just want to.
Yeah.
Done. I know you guys have done a lot of work, it's been front-end loaded with the forty-B, but, you know, it just, things do tend to take on a, like, sometimes take a life of their own unless you properly segment them. It's my thought. I'll let you guys, Chris and.
We, we can see in the next week or two where we are with the peer reviews and, and make that call.
Sure.
If we need to.
Yep.
There are members of the public wishing to speak on this item this evening? Yes, sir.
Brian Costello, three ninety-eight Walnut Street. I don't know which question this actually, who, who can answer this, but do you have the color one? The, the, the color slide?
Yeah, it's in there.
It's just a little easier for me to kind of see. I just have a quick question. Can I ask him a question through you or maybe it's Mr. Goldrick, I don't know? The part that you're donating, I, I see a lot of like water and stuff like that. So is there a, is there a wetland there that's of concern? If we were building, if there's going to be a road, but like, I would assume there has to be some, is there a remediation that would have to happen?
So, so there is existing wetlands there. As part of that funding, we would come up with a design and at that stage it would, a solution of addressing the wetlands would be proposed at that time as well.
And is there a, through the chair, is there a possibility that rather than donate the land, Pulte just builds the road? I don't, I don't know if that's even legal, but I mean, could they, I mean, they've obviously, like through the chair, you, you, I think the average, I think you said to the select board, the, the townhouses are, I don't know, like seven hundred and something thousand, average?
That's.
Yeah, so it's, it's a fairly profitable place for you guys. Obviously, you're in business to make money, that's cool. But I mean, could, could that be negotiated or is that something that we could look at?
So the.
I only ask because they have all the equipment there and they're doing all this stuff and it's sort of like, well, build a road. It's not even that big. I know it, we got a grant for like a half million and then there's another grant that could be available that was more, but.
Build it with prevailing wage, it's a whole different.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, I don't know the answer, yeah.
So the, it's part of a development agreement in terms of the, the donation of the land, so it would have to amend that as it's currently written, it's the donation of land and that's.
Yeah.
And that's it, so that's how, that's how it's currently negotiated. Could potentially revisit that, but I, you know.
Is that something we could go back to, like if they said, wow, the, the wetlands, this is going to cost a lot of money?
So that, so that's outside of the purview of the board. So again, that, that development agreement is outside of this scope. In terms of that, that would be negotiated through the select board in terms of, you know, if that goes further, so.
Just one final, what is the average price of the three, of the, of the townhouses approximately? I know you don't know because you haven't built them, but you must.
That's right, I mean, through, through the chair. I mean, we don't know, so we did submit a physical impact study as part of our application and we're using seven hundred and fifty thousand as a, you know, an average approximate value of, of the townhomes. Some may be less, some may be more.
Is that after sale or is that like the list price? Like when you build, because I know with Pulte, you usually build like a, I can go and then I outfit it and it's, you know, it's like starting at seven fifty, but most people it comes out to be like eight hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's an average price, but you're right. I mean, depending upon the location of the home, depending upon what the homeowner selects to put in the home, you know, the prices of each of the townhomes can, can vary quite a bit.
All right, that's all, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this this evening? Okay. All right, so it sounds like perhaps the, the next step would be we're going to have you guys communicate and try and break this out a bit in terms of what we'll discuss at the next meeting in terms of, you know, if we're talking traffic or stormwater or whatnot. That will give an opportunity to let some of the peer reviews come in and then we can try and be as comprehensive with this and as efficient with this as possible.
That would be great.
Okay. All right, so with that, is there a motion to continue this public hearing until the May first?
I move that we continue the public hearing on the site plan approval and special permit for thirty-three through sixty-nine Green Street until Thursday, May first at seven PM.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for sticking with us. At this hour. Items, proposed zoning bylaw changes in the town meeting, May nineteenth, twenty-three, five, new public hearings.
In accordance with the provisions of MGL, chapter forty-eight, section five, the Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April third, twenty-twenty-five, at seven PM in the Select Board Meeting Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, regarding proposed amendments to the Shrewsbury Zoning Bylaw as follows. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury. Section two, definitions, to amend the definition of frontage easements or to take any other action in relation thereto. The complete text where applicable may be seen during regular business hours in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department, the office of the town clerk at the municipal office building at one hundred Maple Avenue and the Shrewsbury Public Library at six zero nine Main Street. This one as well?
Yeah.
In accordance with the provisions of MGL, chapter one sixty-six, section twenty-two B, the Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April third, twenty-twenty-five, at seven PM in the Select Board Meeting Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, regarding proposal, or excuse me, regarding proposed amendments to the Shrewsbury General Bylaw as follows. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of Shrewsbury by adding a new article thirty to be entitled, quote, "Construction of Utility Poles and Overhead Wires Bylaw", end quote, or to take any other action in relation thereto. The complete text where applicable may be seen during regular business hours in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department, the office of the town clerk at the municipal office building at one hundred Maple Avenue and the Shrewsbury Public Library at six zero nine Main Street.
With the permission of the chair, I'd like to take these a little bit out of order and have Selco go first. Close that out and then I'll do the other remaining.
Good evening, my name's Derek Hool, I'm an engineer with, with Selco. And, and this article, in my opinion, serves to, to codify what we've kind of used as a, a best practice for all new development in town by, by, by making the electric and, and cable utilities in these new developments underground. What this bylaw will serve to do is to prevent the creation or, or extension of existing pole lines, I'm sorry, of new pole lines. Existing pole lines have a, a one-to-one replacement with, with no issues. You know, understanding that it's, you know, might not be operationally feasible to, to, to convert everything, you know, at this time. Long-term, we, we do have hopes to, to put as much as possible underground. With, with that, I'll, I'll keep it there and see if there's any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Any comments from Chris? Any comments, questions from the public? Seems pretty straightforward. So I think we need to close this public hearing, correct?
The action by the board this evening requests is that we close the hearing and then vote on a recommendation to town meeting.
Do you agree?
Yep.
All right, so do we have to take that in two or in one? Can we take it in one vote to close the hearing and send it to?
Yep.
Okay. So can I get a motion for this item?
I, I move that we close the public hearing relative to Article forty-two, Selco and underground wires.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then the next would be to send it to town meeting for consideration?
I move that we recommend Article forty-two, Selco underground wires for, for approval at the town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And next is for Article thirty-eight easements and frontage.
Just the Apollo Amendment. I was always concerned about this.
Thank you. I'll be brief again this evening, given the hour. I'm going to do both. I'll start with easements and frontage, but roll right into accessory dwelling units. Just to combine those for efficiency this evening. Happy to take comments on both. As mentioned, the two Articles, 38 and 39. Articles 38 is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw specifically in regards to the definition of lot frontage of. And Article 39 is in relation to accessory dwelling units to amend the zoning bylaw, specifically the Section 2 definitions, the use table, and as well as the accessory dwelling units provisions that currently exist in the Town Center bylaw, removing those in their entirety and moving them to a new section for accessory dwelling units. The impetus for this is to align with the provisions of Section 7 and 8 of Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024, which is the Affordable Homes Act. Just briefly, the easements and frontage, what this is meant to accomplish in the events of a taking that would render the setback of a structure non-conforming, this would render that harm, you know, null. Essentially, the existing structures would maintain their conforming status as well as the lot. So any eminent domain action by the town would not harm a community. So it's a protection to existing structures and lots.
Kind of insulates the town from damages.
Correct. And then accessory dwelling units. So as mentioned, this is part of the provisions of aligning our current bylaw with the provisions of Section 7 and 8 of Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024 and the subsequent EUHLC guidelines. The Act allows for accessory dwelling units as of right in single-family residential zoning districts subject to the regulations as defined by EUHLC. I won't go through that list. I think we covered them at the last meeting. Some of the questions that were brought forth from the previous public hearing was, will detached accessory dwelling units require separate water and sewer services? And the answer to that, I did confirm is correct, that those will be required. The sewer regulations, specifically Sections 206 and 303 of their rules and regulations, specify that they are separate for each detached unit or structure. And the minimum separation needs to be 10 feet between both water and sewer lines. Connection fees will also apply for accessory dwelling units. And that's specifically been written into their rules and regulations. Finally, there was a question on the roof pitch and how that factors into gross square footage calculation. I'm not going to go through that definition in its entirety, but it's essentially the gross square footage calculation is the measurement of the perimeter of the outside walls, certainly, you know, multiplied by the number of floors. But it does not include any space where the floor-to-ceiling height is less than six feet. So that's where the roof pitch, where you have attic space, under those eaves, there's usually a small portion of that attic space that gets cut out of that gross square footage. With that, again, we've had the Planning Board referral to the Select Board on January 9th. Select Board referred that back to Planning Board for their public hearings on February 11th. We had our March 6th hearing on the accessory dwelling unit article. And now April 3rd, our final Planning Board public hearing. These are scheduled for Finance Committee public hearings, which will be held April 10th and April 24th. So happy to engage at any of those times. But again, similarly, the request this evening would be to have the public hearing comment. And if there's no other outstanding questions, close the hearing and vote to recommend.
So any questions or comments from the board on either of these two articles?
No questions.
No questions, Julie.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on these items this evening?
All right, Greg Richards, 16 Hickory Drive. I guess the first comment is just on the agenda timing. And having the public hearings maybe earlier in the evening. I know, you know, if we're trying to be more engaged and connected, to have the public be able to participate, it would be better than 11:15 PM if possible. Just two questions on the ADU one, Chris. The, I know that there's other provisions in the Mass General Law. For instance, the ability to do a special permit for multiple ADUs and then also like the uses of those. Are those going to be codified into any portion of our local zoning? Or is there like a reference back to it? Because how does that work, I guess?
Yeah, so the current proposal before, as it's currently written, is just taking the existing language and moving it to its new section, amending the, to allow it, not townwide, but anywhere a single-family residential unit is allowed. And then some of the sections are either amended or struck from those existing regulations in order to align with the regulation. So anything that the state law essentially said we cannot restrict, that our current language did, we've removed that section. And then, for example, amended it where we had 800 square feet as the maximum, that's increased to 900 square feet in alignment with the state regulations.
But like the reference word allows, I think the state regulation allows for special permit for a second ADU?
Correct.
But it's not like mentioned anywhere in our local one. That's what I was referencing. Same thing with like uses of it for, I don't think you can prohibit short-term rentals. I think when I was reading the Mass General Law either. So those types of things is what I'm referring to. So like, how is, how is somebody going to know?
Correct. So the, and so that was, we originally were remaining silent on the special permit for the second accessory dwelling unit. The way that the draft regulations were written is, it was a May, towns May, allow a second. So we were going to remain silent and just not allow it. With that formal publication of that, that language changed to shall. So communities shall allow it by special permit. So we'll be establishing the Planning Board as the special permit granting authority for any second accessory dwelling unit on a special permit.
Okay. So it would be somewhere in our general zoning at some point? Just to say...
It will be in the very first section of this.
Okay. But it's not there now. That's, yeah, right.
Yeah.
The one that's public, I know you're, yeah. The one that you showed, or at least was on the website, it doesn't have it in it yet, but it will before town meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
And then, just in full transparency, so again, this is a very brief update to align with that. We did receive DLTA funding to evaluate the model bylaw that was published very recently. We'll be going through that. It's part of a, you know, a number of communities have signed on to that district local technical assistance funding through our Regional Planning Agency. So we're following that to see if there's any more comprehensive update that we want to do, given the model bylaw that was published.
With that...
That would not, that would not be at May, but I just want to, to separate that, that we are reviewing that, that a following town meeting, we may come back to accessory dwelling units. This is really just a brief update to align our existing language.
Okay. And that may include some of those other things you were discussing, such as, I think, like on the Affordable Housing Trust, some uses through like emergency shelter programs and other things. Would that be those allowed uses in that other bylaw, or?
So those are all separate. So the Affordable Housing Trust is evaluating programs that they can pursue with their existing funding, whether it's a rental assistance program or other affordable housing provisions. So they're currently in the process of evaluating which programs they want to pursue. They haven't developed a formal proposal at this stage yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Any other members of the public wishing?
Hi, DeDing Gunnett, 43, LeBlanc Road. Are we going above and beyond the 900 square feet and two-bedroom for our guidelines? Are we staying with the state guideline? Some communities are raising their guidelines and allowing for larger units. Are we sticking to the 900 for our guidelines, or?
For the current proposal, correct, here, the maximum will be 900 feet, which is, or sorry, 900 square feet in alignment with the minimum that the legislature requires.
What does current mean? Like...
So our current regulations state 800 gross square footage, 900, we cannot restrict under 900 square feet. So that's our maximum.
So that's what we're going to be writing into for town meeting?
This current proposal is not going above and beyond.
Okay.
That's what I would say.
Is there the ability for someone to get a special permit to go above that?
Not as currently drafted.
Okay. Stretch energy code requirements. Are we going to be putting additional stretch energy code requirements above and beyond what the master requirements are?
So we cannot put any stretch energy code that would not apply to a single-family home to accessory dwelling units.
Okay. I had read that some communities were putting additional stretch energy code requirements on them. Thank you. What's the status of our sewer moratorium? And how will these new sewer hookups affect this? I know that the ADUs, that sewer, water, and public safety can't be used against it, but because we've had a sewer moratorium in the past and we're in like a specific category that we don't have sewer capacity, how is this going to affect us?
So not to oversimplify the sewer moratorium, but that would still remain in place. So the sewer moratorium, not to oversimplify it, but we can connect to existing sewer. We cannot extend that sewer line to serve additional units. Title V requirements, septic requirements would still be in place. All building code, all conservation, all other regulations are in place and would be in effect for accessory dwelling units. In addition, as mentioned earlier, the accessory dwelling units will be required, if detached, to have a separate water and sewer service. We'll have to pay connection fees and we'll have to meet that minimum distance of those utilities, of 10 feet.
So if we get a whole bunch of two-bedroom units, it's not going to have impact on our sewer capacity?
So again, this does allow connection, so I'm not...
I understand that. I'm talking strictly capacity.
Right. I wouldn't say that this won't have a impact on capacity. You know, it would be, it does allow for additional units in single-family neighborhoods.
Short-term rental, what is the definition of short-term rental?
So short-term rental is, it's specifically defined in the Mass General Laws. There's a lot of specifics in terms of time of occupancy and that, which is really meant to be Airbnb or, you know, Verbo, some of those other name brand services. But what I would tie that to is that regulation also, it also requires licensing with the state. And that's probably the easiest way to define it, is licensed through the state program for any of those Airbnb or short-term rentals.
So we don't traditionally have a lot of in-home rentals right now. We have some rentals, but this is going to be brand-new to us. Is there going to be any type of monitoring system as to like, you know, we've had a few Airbnbs in town? And is there going to be any monitoring body and regulatory body that pays attention to, you know, if anybody, any of these turn into a short-term rental and if any, you know?
So the building inspector, building inspector's office is actively monitoring any new ADUs that come in and are proposed. Currently have two that have been proposed already. And in addition, I'm not sure how formal it is, but there is monitoring of existing short-term rentals. We do monitor the Airbnb sites and keep at least a loose track of units that are being used that way. The current language is not, is silent in terms of Airbnbs and short-term rentals, but I anticipate as part of that, DLTA is, you know, looking at subsequent updates that we'll be evaluating if that's something that we want to pursue.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public this evening? All right, seeing none, I think...
I move that we close the public hearing on Article 38, easements and frontage.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we recommend Article 38, easements and frontage to town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now for Article 39?
I move that we close the public hearing on Article 39, accessory dwelling unit, Section 2 definitions, Section 7 dot Y.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we recommend Article 39, accessory dwelling units, Section 2 definitions, and Section 7 dot Y to town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. New business?
At the risk of being admonished later, given the hour, I think we can wait on the Community Preservation Communities Needs Collection worksheet and do that at the May meeting. I'll address that with them.
That's appreciated. Okay. We have a couple of items that we do need to take votes on in regard to the tri-party agreement for Hyatt Circle.
Yep, so we do have a request for both a covenant release and a tri-party agreement for Hyatt Circle. We've been working to get those documents prepared. I do know that we did receive a draft late this afternoon, but I haven't had it reviewed by council. So I do know, the applicant has been working very diligently to get this on the agenda. I thought we might, might be able to make it, but there's still a but. I know the board is typically interested to have this reviewed by council prior to signing, so.
Okay, so we can't make any decision on this this evening?
So we might as well, so we're not taking up the covenant release either because it's no tri-party, so.
Correct. I mean, it's up to the board. You know, we can execute it if you want, but I do know that they typically...
Yeah. So why don't we hold those two items until next, next meeting?
We'll get a bond for $299, Hartford Turnpike.
So we do have a bond number. I apologize, I was not able to have that drafted, the actual bond document drafted for you this evening. But I do have the bond amount prepared. So similarly, I can do that at May and...
Yeah. I'd like to do that in May then. All right, any old business?
None this evening.
And just note, two bits of correspondence received, emails from DeDing Gunnett for 9 Walcott Road and an email from Mr. James Bishop with regard to Hyatt Circle.
Oh, it's not anonymous. I had it as anonymous, I was going to say.
Any other items this evening?
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.